Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Boss?
Present.
Piffia?
Present.
Graham?
Present.
Hughes?
Present.
Frye?
Present.
Schroller?
Here.
Throm?
Present.
Barnes?
Present.
We have a quorum, 8-0. All right. The first item is the approval of minutes. I have some... Does anybody else have amendments before I start to go through mine? All right. I will go through them quickly. And mine are based on the pages of the minutes, not the pages of the agenda. So, page 2, at the very top, when you... The first line, it should read, according to the tape, that CM Barnes confirmed with Rick Enns that the agreement states. That's kind of how it went. And then the motion passed 6-2, not 6-0.
Oh, 6-2. Yeah, you're right. That's right.
And on the third line of number 3, it should read that Mayor Grun confirmed with CA St. John that Landall Corporation would be responsible for that, to state that he confirmed that. On number 4, on that same... On the eighth line, I was... I thought it should add that Hanover's Firehouse costs $5,038,030 and includes... And then it continues on. And then it was built in 2019 for $90 per square foot. And then on page 3, on the consent agenda, it was not as amended. It was just approved the consent agenda on the second line. And then on page 5, on number 6, that... Since the document wasn't included in the agenda packet and it wasn't described anywhere, I feel like on the third line, after service line, we needed to add, "The 1-inch water line will replace a water main near St. Gregory's Catholic School where several water leaks have occurred. It also brings the water meters of four homes to outside water pits. The 2-inch water line moves the city's water meter from where the new fire station will be built across the street to the Lakeview complex." Just because that document doesn't describe what those borings were for...
Well, technically, that's not where they're at.
Well, that's what we said.
I know, that's what you said. But they're at by the high school.
I wondered what that was. Okay. Are you going to correct that in our discussion tonight, or how are you going to want to do that?
I don't know that however you want to do it, but that was corrected.
We can clarify it in the Water and Sewer Department.
Okay, yeah.
Because this is as the minutes occur.
Okay, I was going to say, because that was... They've talked about doing that one, but the one that they're boring is across from the high school.
I couldn't figure that out.
Right.
I drove by and couldn't figure it out.
Right.
Okay. So, on page 6, on Parks Number 1, on line number 10, I just wanted to add that Mayor Grun asked CA St. John to present other locations for city snow piles, and then continue on with the rest. And then on page 7, number 3, just pull the comma after including. And then, Darlene, on that same page, the civic's day last time was just for MHS. It wasn't for junior high as well, right? It was just... Is ninth grade...
No, it was also junior high, but Principal Schrader took the 7th and 8th graders.
He did talk about the elections that day?
I don't know his specific topic, but he was going to talk to the 7th and 8th graders.
Okay, so pull that one, not to do that, because it did include... You see my list? Pull that one, because that one's...
Oh.
Just leave it as it is. And the last one is on page 8, and so the 20-year... We can either say firefighters for Jamie Rose and Mike Wetter. And I didn't know if we wanted to change all of them to firefighters instead of firemen. Do we want firefighters?
Oh, because you were saying fireman is gender-specific.
Yeah. So, well, Jamie Rose was the one honored there, so...
Right, Jamie and Mike Wetter.
Yeah. So, do you want to make all of those just firefighters on all those to be consistent? Yes?
That'd be good.
Okay. So, those are my amendments. So, I entertain a motion to approve as amended?
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 8-0. All right. The next item is public comments. Anybody who is not on the agenda can come to the podium and talk for five minutes, give your name, your address, and your ward. Is that you, Lynn? Or you can come on up?
Lynn Stos, Ward 4, 509 South 15th Street. Couple issues that I want to address, share my feelings, I guess. Up at our church, Mount Calvary Lutheran, there's a storm sewer on the south side of May Street between 17th and 18th. It's been plugged for years. Different people from our church have called down here and reported it. Tickets were written. It was plugged up again with the last bigger rain we had, and it takes a day or two for it to seep out and run away. Now, the street has several holes out as we come out of our north driveway that I'm assuming came from the water freezing, thawing, breaking up asphalt.
Is the storm sewer on the south side of the church?
No, north side of the church.
It's on the north side of the church, on the alley? No, it's on May Street, all the way across.
On May Street, yeah. We have an entrance and exit on the north side, and it's right on the west side of that exit entrance where that sewer line or storm sewer plugs up. I have pictures of it, if anybody's interested. But over the last two, three years, it's been reported to the city probably four or five times. I've done it myself twice. One of our other trustees has done it a couple times. I talked to Cindy a little bit last week about it. She said the city has cleaned it. I've never noticed. Every time it rains or its snow melts, it blocks, it's plugged up. Cindy did check with the city crew.
Water and streets?
They told her there's locust trees that drop their pods, and that fills up in there and won't let it drain. There's no locust trees in that whole block, so not sure what that problem, how the locusts that don't exist actually plug it up. That's the first item.
You know about that, about that specific storm sewer?
Not that specific storm sewer.
No, he wasn't here.
What direction does it drain from there? It just seems like kind of a flat area right there, and I'm wondering if it's a...
They told me it drains across into the Landalls parking lot. You'll see it where it comes out, down there.
Underneath Landall property?
You said you called several times. Have they taken the sewer camera down to take a look at it, to see what it is?
When I talked to them, they told me that they were aware of it, and they do clean it, and it just plugs because of all the trees that are there. So, I don't know. I assume that they have taken the camera where we've had complaints for several years, that they have.
Can we make sure they do that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll camera it and see if...
During the winter, when that freezes over, it's big skeeting rate leaving the exit of our church, because it covers the whole driveway.
Wow.
Out into the street, very similar to the corner of 16th and Jenkins, where that storm sewer is always plugged, and there's a big... I go by there every Sunday for church, so I see it also. My opinion is that the city should probably use some of their city workers to clean and solve these problems with the storm sewer, rather than talking about them trimming trees.
Well, we have... We do. I read on the highlights where they clean storm sewers.
Yep. After every... After every incident, our street crew goes out and cleans all the grates, all the storm sewers off.
So, we can just make... We can make an effort for them to look at that area, though. We can do that.
I just know it's plugged up very often.
Often, yeah. Okay, what else you got, George?
The other thing, my other comments are centered around the tree issue that was discussed. I talked to several people, including Carla and Austin and Dave and even Butch recently, about people that don't comply with the city tree ordinance, and nothing has ever been done. About two years ago, I got a letter from the city saying, "Your trees don't comply. Take care of it." Well, they didn't say which trees, which street, because I live on a corner. Finally found out which two, so I took care of it. Apparently, nobody else in the city does, or very few. So, I've been driving around, and there's a lot of trees in a lot of areas that don't meet the city ordinance or the new post one that you'll be talking about. There's numerous ones in city property that don't comply, and I would suggest that the city take care of their property, make sure all their trees comply before they make us citizens do it, set a good example. Every city park, lion's targets in the city down, all of them have violations of tree ordinance. If you go and look, you'll see it. The ordinance says trees that hang over streets, or sidewalks, rather, have to be eight-foot or higher. Every one of the parks have trees that hang over sidewalks that are not eight-foot. You have to duck to go under them in most cases, and I'm only six-foot, so...
Well, that's a valid point, that we should be in compliance first and foremost. I respect that, so...
The other thing, I guess that I don't necessarily... Well, for example, all the new trees we... The city put around town. The other day, I pulled up in front of the post office. I was going to go into the advocate, and I turned, and I ran into an owl, hit me right in the forehead. The tree is... Has branches obviously hanging way below the eight-foot level, but somebody hung this owl, and the tree next to it, there's another owl. That owl happens to be up about eight-foot. This one hit me right here. That should be a violation.
So, what are we going to do?
Either who owns the tree or who owns the owl.
What are we going to do about the baby trees that we're not in compliance with? I mean, our new trees, none of those will be eight feet tall yet.
They're not hanging over the tree. They're... I mean, if you're running into those trees, you're... There's other issues. But those trees, the branches are not hanging over the driving lanes, which is our main concern.
I guess I wasn't talking about the driving lanes. I was talking about the sidewalk.
Right.
I was thinking of the sidewalk.
But they're mostly over the grate or square and straight up.
Yeah.
They're kept up before they are allowed to get out, and they stay out of head.
And I picked some of those trees to do just that, to keep within their cylinder.
So, you disagree that our... Are you talking about specifically our downtown trees not being...
Well, that's... I'm talking about the one in front of the post office that is branching out, and if you don't walk around it, you're going to hit your head, especially with that owl. You're fortunate it didn't cut the head, but there's no reason to have an owl hanging five and a half feet off the ground. People can run into it.
I agree, that's awfully low. I suspect somebody probably hung it there to keep birds from being in the trees and pooping on cars.
Whatever.
But, no, no, I get what you're saying.
You know.
Yeah.
It's uncalled for.
Austin can contact the advocate and see if they'll put their owl higher.
Well, I don't know if it's the advocates or the post office. It was in front of the post office, kind of, but they're side by side.
We'll find out.
Okay.
The other thing is, the last meeting, it was suggested, I think by Kevin, that we maybe raise the limit of trees to 12 or 14-foot?
16.
Well, minutes in papers said 12, or 14, I'm sorry. But the ordinance that you have is 16. So, again, as I was driving around, there's tons of trees on every street in town that I drive on that are in violation of the 12-foot, let alone the 16. The other problem is, I was told, when you're dumping rock to do your streets, the truck beds go up 16-foot about. What about the cable TV wires? Those are well below 16-feet. You're going to have to dodge them. They're hanging way low. They are probably only 10 or 12-foot off in many places, so again...
Are you talking about on the chip and seal routes that we were talking about?
Well, I'm not sure where.
When you say dump rock?
There... I've seen them different places, and they're well below 16-feet. So, again, you're going to have problems you've got to watch out for. Finally, the last thing I want to say is, if the city do like you do with your lawn mowing, if you don't mow your lawn, you send them a letter, and then you mow it and charge them. Why don't we do the same for the trees? If people are violating them, send them a letter, tell them which trees are in violation, give them 30 days, 90 days, whatever, and then let them know that they're going to be charged to hire Kurtz or somebody else to come in and cut them, and let our city workers take care of other things like storm sewers.
Didn't Butch do some of that for a while with the trees also, low-hanging branches?
We send out... When we get complaints, we send out letters.
That's... Yeah.
Complaints about what?
About low-hanging trees.
Okay. There's two, three of them violations that are within a block of my house, and I've told people that. Nobody's done anything about it, so...
Did you get ahold of us then about it?
Pardon?
Did you get ahold of us about it?
I've told... I've told David, told Austin, told Carla, I've told Butch. One of them is a city-owned lot that used to be in the floodplain. There's that spirea built out around the curve, right up to the curb, and it's this tall. The city owns it.
Okay, well, will you get with Austin and go through those specific trees, especially if they're on our properties?
All right. You can go ride around with me all day, and we'll spend a whole day looking at it.
Well, that or with Butch, I mean...
Butch is gone for the winter.
Butch is off, okay.
Yeah.
Well, at least we can address the city ones, right, Austin?
Yeah, I'll just have the guys go around to the parks and address it.
Okay.
But, you know, I paid out my trees trim, because I did it myself. Not everybody's capable, but if I have to do my own, why shouldn't somebody... Everybody else have to pay for their own or do it themselves to make it comply? That's wasting the city money.
And Mayor, I don't think that all these code violations should be complaint-driven. If it's a violation, it's a violation, because I know that people have told me about different things that concern them, but they are afraid to contact City Hall because they're afraid their neighbors will somehow retaliate against them.
Be upset, yeah. That's true. That's true.
I agree, but...
Not all of them are complaint-driven, though. That's what Butch did, drive around, look for things, watch old ones.
He sat in front of my house, and I said, "See that? The city owns that. It's in violation. See that? Somebody else owns it. That's in violation. See that? That's in violation." Three of them within a block from my house. They're all in violation today, and that was this summer.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The same way with people that moved their lawns and loaded into the street and didn't pick it up, so there was a lot of that this summer, and people are afraid to say anything because they don't want to make their neighbors mad, so...
Yeah. Code enforcement, though, isn't always complaint-driven, is it?
No.
Not always, no. But that's a lot of our work.
He drives around, though, for the grasses is not complaint... The grass height is not complaint-driven, right? But you're just saying maybe tree height is more complaint-driven?
It just happens to be... It's... He drives around and finds what he can find, and he's one guy driving around the four square miles of city.
If I could say, I think we had a little trouble this year because we got stopped with the code, who was going to enforce it. So, he had stuff he did, and then he had to redo it. Because we were...
Remember, we redid the ordinance?
That's right. We redid the letters, and we redid the ordinance, so he had...
And we did what?
We stalled.
We stopped because of that. So, this year was not a good year for that.
Okay. Well, we can at least address our city property.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to share? All right, we will go on to business and discussion items. Chief Ackerman on Keating Drive.
Good evening. I had a meeting with one of the residents out on Keating Drive the other day. It's the same concerns that's been going on for a couple of years out there, speeding and such. So, I met with them about what we can and can't do because it's considered a private drive. And he wanted me to ask, is there a way that we can ask to annex that drive? Or is there a way to get an agreement from the property owners to enforce the laws of the street out there? I was hoping your attorney would be here tonight, I see not.
But is there a reason why we haven't annexed that street?
It's not... It's not annexed. It's... They kept it a private drive.
It's a private drive.
They kept it a private drive for their tax purposes, for their...
Their tax credits.
For the tax credit.
Has the tax credits not expired?
I don't know, but that's the reason why.
And also, I think, one, at least once when it came up, was we'd have to maintain it, and if we don't own it, then it's... We don't have to maintain it.
I know, but don't they pay taxes just like everyone else?
Not right now, no.
No, I don't think so.
Their... Tax credits don't last.
I don't know the full situation since it was before me, but it was the tax credits. That's why they chose to keep it a private drive.
Is your knowledge...
What I was wondering, is there a way that they could sign over...
Agreement.
Agreement to let us at least enforce laws on that?
I was going to ask, are you aware of anywhere else that it seems like...
That does that?
Yeah.
Not that, to be honest. Usually, we take... Or the city takes over the... At least the drive. You know, it's like the highway. From Hardee's out, we have city limits all the way out except for the highway.
I wondered about parking lots, say something like the Walmart parking lot.
Well, the only thing with Walmart, see, we can enforce there are the fire lanes and the handicaps.
And not the stop signs or anything?
That's the only thing that's going to be regulated on private property.
I do have a... I do have real-world... Well, not real-world experience, but I just visited... Visited my aunt and uncle in St. Louis. They have like a three-quarter mile street that is a private drive. It's marked private at the entrance, and their homeowners association maintains the whole thing. They do the snow, they do... It's all that. It's the Wildwood, Missouri. We just had this conversation.
We have written some tickets here lately out there. People pass some school buses. A short bus picks kids up out there a couple of times up the street, and we did write some tickets here those last month before that.
Is Keating Drive a private drive all the way through Bulldog Apartments?
Yeah.
Okay.
See if we can get an agreement.
And are two different companies?
Yeah. Well, you can also find out if the tax credit time is... Talk to the management.
Is that the two different companies that own that road then? Because, you know, Bulldog is different.
I think so. I think the...
So, you think Bulldog might be getting tax credits now?
We don't know anything about the tax credits.
I remember that that was a mention of concern when they were building it, that that's the reason they were doing that.
Is Prairie Lane private?
No.
It's a public street.
But it's a dead end. I mean, it doesn't... The connection between it and Keating is private.
It is, it's at the end. They turn and go.
But the turn itself is also out of bars.
A half-block?
I was just curious.
It's not even that, but it's part of it's on the private property as well.
Yep.
So, is that... The council can decide. I guess once we find out if the tax credits have expired, then the council has to decide if they want to do an agreement or if they want to just take ownership of the road.
Or have your attorney ask if there is a way that we can have it done without taking it into the street, so you don't have to maintain it. At least give us some use for enforcing laws on it.
Yeah, I think if we can pursue some sort of cooperative agreement as far as just, you know, traffic infraction and traffic enforcement.
It makes it a lot easier for us to go out there and do it.
That's where some of the tenants out there need to write.
I've told them that. You need to notify the people you're paying.
Yeah. So, we can get something enforced out there.
I would agree. You know, they talked about speed bumps, too. I don't mind speed bumps in short distances like that, but I don't know what happens when kind of time for snow removal. If you're going to put speed bumps in, I would put permanent ones in that they can go over with the blades.
Don't we have those temporary ones?
We have one temporary one, but it's only the half width of the street.
So, is there any value to sticking it out there to slow traffic down?
It's private lane, you're staying on there. You don't notice.
We can't. So, we can't put it anywhere on there?
Without permission. The thing is, if you're going to get it... They're like $300 and some dollars. You might as well just put a full one across. And with speed bumps comes liability, you know, because you could possibly damage a car or who knows what.
I think that was discussed before Bulldog Apartments were built, because, you know, there was some discussion of where it would be, whether it would be on the property line or at the crosswalk that the senior citizens use or where...
The crosswalk is where I would put one, and I'd put another one just right inside the apartment area.
And I've seen those that are like a wide speed bump that are the crosswalk.
They're not so dramatic.
Yeah.
It's kind of a rolling, but it definitely gets your attention.
And they're at the crosswalk.
Forty miles an hour. How are we doing?
So, I guess we need to talk to the management company.
Well, we've been trying for I don't know how long, and their management company's not cooperating, so I think it's time to make them do something.
That is too bad.
Have we tried to contact them?
No, I've... I actually received, I think, either beginning of this year or the end of last year, I received an email from somebody who said they were, I think, one of the owners. And they said, "Hey, can we meet with you?" And I said, "Yes. Come on in. Never heard from them again."
Because there's a lady that takes care of...
Dee Layman has...
...the place. She was to take the message to them. I know that, just from the meeting I was at last night.
Yeah, out of Manhattan. I mean, they contacted me, and I said, "Hey, come on in."
Was Dee Layman still the manager on site?
I have two of those.
So, yeah, so she'll give you the information, but we just need to contact them directly.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The application for the economic development. Dave?
In fact, you got that volume, Tina Spurgeon. I was going to be building them a house on the lot. They own the whole lot where they... The house that you have pictures of, that's what they live in. They're going to build this house to the north of that. And after that house is built, they're going to move in, and then they're going to tear down the other one. Any questions? Bill is here tonight.
I, I have a question, kind of part of this, is that, is that an actual alleyway on the south edge of the property?
South side is an alleyway, yes.
And it obviously doesn't go through, or is there a reason we have it to exist there? Or, I mean, we've, we've gone through the process of, I would say deleting some of these other alleys in that area that serve no purpose.
I don't know if there's any utilities in there, that's the main reason you always keep them, is there utilities there, but.
I suspect there's probably not running down through that low area, but.
To the community gardens?
Yeah.
We can check.
I just think it might be, you know, a chance to clean that up and get it on the tax route.
He owns the property on the south side.
Of that alleyway?
Yes.
We'll see that.
Down in the garden and stuff there, you got like, what, three lots? I mean, he'd be in favor of, if they came in if you wanted to, but.
I, I just kinda, when I saw the, the lot lines drawn out, I thought that might be an option to, you know, if we're not, we don't need it for a utility right of way, I don't know why we would keep it off the tax rules, plus I believe there's some structure maybe over it currently?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
That's not that, like, park area for the community gardens people, is it?
No, it's like, it's like your driveway, isn't it?
This is up on the hillside.
Is it like a driveway now, basically?
And then that, that lot number seven, do you, who owns that? Do you know, Dave?
Where my map went.
So that, like that lot?
Seven, eight, and nine, down there in the bottom, uh, Bill owns that. For that 29 is stamped in there?
Uh-huh.
He owns them three lots.
Bill?
Virgin.
Oh, okay. So you own seven, eight, and nine, and six, five and six?
Yeah.
And three and four?
Nope.
No, okay, so you own six lots, okay.
Two, three, and four back there is cities.
Okay.
Eleven and 10 is the cities, down in there.
So he owns six lots?
Five lots.
He owns five.
Five lots.
So he owned seven, eight, and nine?
Seven, eight, nine.
And then what, five and six?
Five and six.
Okay.
Oh, and the ones behind.
Okay. Well, my two questions to Dave that he answered before the meeting was, one was, um, that the house would be valued over 35,000 because that's what's required on ordinance, and that he agrees that it meets the terms as being a blighted structure, and he said yes. So those were my two questions to Dave earlier. So you're gonna stay, you're not gonna take demo of the house till your other house is up and up, running, huh?
Right.
Makes sense. All right, you guys have any other questions for Dave or Bill?
You want us to check on that, utilities in that alley?
Well, you can check on it, I don't think it's gonna affect this.
Won't necessarily affect this, but it just kinda brought it up.
Going forward, yeah.
If, if that's something that the landowners adjacent would be interested in.
So.
Move to approve the application for the economic development.
Second it.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go, all right.
Do you wanna put a time limit after he's out of the other house to get it down?
What's the timeframe to get this house built?
No, I'm saying after the house is.
Oh, I know, I'm just curious if it's winter or something, cause that seems like, I mean, if this, if the other house is done in 60 days, it'd be a little tough.
I think they wanna start on the foundation here.
Before freezing.
But you're just saying.
Or he's gonna do, he had, he had some couple sidewalk and stuff he wanted to get done, some of his other work, anyway, he's gonna start on.
We, well, we could either do that, a total date, or we could just set a date of, at once they have moved in, or that it's oper.
But I think some of these we need to kinda set a, even on a demos that we do, I think we need to put a timeframe on that to get it done, get them capped off and stuff.
That's a good idea.
I think, I, I mean, my two cents is.
Yeah, I got two of them that are getting kinda drug out and getting the things that are capped off, so.
If you can give more, I'd say 120 days, I mean, I'd be willing to say, be a little generous because.
Well, I, I'd give you six months or whatever, you know.
Or even, yeah.
Cause I believe he may try to take it down himself and try to salvage some lumber and stuff, and then maybe add a garage on if he's got enough material under this house, so.
So you, you're okay with six months? How does council feel about six months?
Six months from today?
No, from the.
Six months from completion. Just wanna make sure, six months from.
Yeah, or three.
Certificate of occupancy or whatever.
Occupancy, that's right.
How long do you think it would take you?
Well, I'm actually gonna have somebody tear it down.
All right? So you won't be demo?
No.
Six months sounds like a little, a little too long.
Next 90 would be fine.
90 days? From the date of certificate of occupancy?
We don't do certificate of occupancy.
What do we do? What can we use as a guide?
Do what?
Instead of cer, they were gonna say certificate of occupancy, which we don't do, uh, what would you say would be the?
What's the date, what's the, what's that clock to start?
What's the trigger, yeah.
Ninety, 90 days from the closing.
As soon as the other one's done, I need to get, move into it.
But what do you, but see, that's, that's kinda vague.
Yeah, so tell us what the, how will we identify a starting date of the 90 days?
From the closing on the other, from the closing on the hap, new house, habitat?
Will they get a deed issued when it's completed?
Uh, yes, there'll be a closing, just like a normal.
So there is a closing.
So from the date of closing.
From, yeah, from the 90 days from the closing.
That's what we needed. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to make that subject to.
90 days, from the date of closing.
Second.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, madam.
Yes.
Is that gonna be universal so we don't go through this again?
Yeah, you know, we probably need to modify.
If it isn't, so we can just say, rule, this rule works, this rule don't work.
Why, why don't you?
I think all these demos, we're just, somebody's gonna do it, give 90 days, get them down and.
Yeah, it's gotta be a general way for.
Do you wanna bring an amended application and we'll just approve it the next meeting?
We kinda amended this one already.
Right.
I think we should leave a window in there for subject to extension if they come and approach the council.
For a reason.
Yeah, just, I mean, some freak weather situation or who knows, just so there is that as an option to extend it.
So you wanna bring a revised one just so we can approve it?
We can just add that in where we changed some other Sunday.
Okay.
And we just dropped, yeah.
We can make, you wanna make those other two that we, whatever you're saying, retroactive or?
Um, just.
When you bring it, okay.
Get them to get them done, but, um, yeah, we kinda had in it, we wanted this, this stuff needs to go out to landfill, so.
Yep. Okay.
We added that in here, made some just a few weeks ago, so.
You wanna bring a revised one just for us to prove next meeting?
Yeah, we'll just put that in, do it all. It seems like little things come up.
Oh yeah, this is a new program, it makes sense, yeah. All right, so we have a motion to second it, right? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Okay, I also have one that I'd like to bring up, um, been working on a house, I didn't, didn't get it done, in fact, I just kinda slipped, I've been working on a building permit up here on, for one on 7th Street, it's a new home being put on a, a vacant lot, and that would be one that is a thousand dollars to help with the, um, cost of the building permits and the fees, and that's for Lauren, Lorraine, no.
Lauren.
Warren.
Lauren and Bush. You're gonna.
Where is that at?
It'd be in 706 North 7th, they're doing a bunch of dirt work up there.
So it already meets the criteria for the subdivisions, so.
Yes.
And it, and it's an empty lot that they're building on, okay, well, I would entertain a motion to approve that.
I so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eight no, all right. Anything else, Dave?
Not with this.
Oh, then you move on to the next item, is this one yours too, the software?
I guess so.
Okay.
I have my page with me for some reason, and I got the new computers put in the other day, the software on the storm sirens that we have here in City Hall, it's not, hasn't been updated since when I put in it.
2008.
2008, so it's 11 years old, it did not, isn't compatible with the new computers.
No.
So, the form that you got is from Blue Valley Public Safety, they are the ones who bought the sirens from, they're the ones that come up and service them all the time, and you can do that remote.
Yeah, well, it sounds like we have to do, do we have any money in that budget for storm sirens left?
Um, well, no, but we have to do it.
I know, we have to do it, I'm just.
Yeah, the line item will be overdrawn, but that's.
In the general fund?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
All right.
Move to, move to go with Blue Valley Public Safety for software updates for the storm sirens, amount of $3,057.80.
Second it.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eight no, all right. Anything else, Dave? You're gonna stay up there for the streets?
Uh, stay here if you need something on the street, there's some city.
Okay. Well, first off, Cindy, thanks for the memo, talking about, that was kinda, that was helpful to see what the tree board conclusion was, the only thing, and, and Cindy did, um, pull the ordinance to agree with what the previous ordinance did, so that it, it just flows better, cause the other one kinda made its question why we had to go to the Board of Health anyway. The only other thing is, I, and at the meeting we discussed it, but we never did come to a, a consensus on this, but when I look at that on 18, the ordinance 1885, on page 24 on number C, our big discussion was what, what denotes an intersection and, and the 35 feet starts from what point, and I thought maybe we should add, uh, any tree or bush located within 30 feet of the center point of any intersection, just to clarify that it's not from the curb line. Did you change it?
No, I just drew these up so we could kinda discuss this.
See, you knew what 30 feet was.
That's what you asked about today.
Yes. You didn't come back, you just.
Started working on it, so, I think I got it.
I've seen that I can look at some of these beside me while we talk about it.
It's gonna be real difficult to figure out where to measure anything from.
Right.
So what I did here, on the right side, that's just an intersection that's regular size, most streets are all 31 feet from back of curb to back to curb, that's pretty normal with a lot of them, now out here, this one's wider, highway, main street, some of them going off main street are a little wider until they get out a block or two, so that's just a standard 80-foot right of way on the right side, but the radius is on those curves, if you wanna find the middle of that intersection, like you're talking, right, Carla?
Oh, so you're saying, I'm not giving it enough, big enough?
Yeah, cause see, if you go to the middle of that intersection, you're 32 feet to the curb.
Oh, so.
So you're only three foot into the.
But we just, so, if you, you're saying 35 from the curb line, but you didn't wanna say curb line at that meeting.
That's what we were, yeah, that's what we was kicking around.
So.
The one on the, while we're looking, the one on the left side is a 60-foot right of way, which most of those are up in the newer subdivisions, and they don't have sidewalks, so, that's why the one side has sidewalks. Okay, so if you take, however you wanna take it, back on the 80-foot right of way or over on the 60-foot, if you take the radius, but you draw straight out and get that point out there where it says 11 feet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, if you draw 35-foot radius, that's about where it comes in. It just cuts right inside you, it really cuts real close to the corner. It cuts real close to the corner of the property line, that's what those sliced lines are there inside that sidewalk.
That's 35 feet, that does sound like 35 feet.
From this, yeah, that's what he said, yeah, it does, he did it with a protractor.
And the way I always kinda understood that to mean is you just come over here on the curb, you take your sight line going, let's say, north, and then sight line going east, 35 feet approximately, that's where you would be, the way that ordinance reads, and really when I drew this out, you get to look at, that's exactly the same thing if you go out to the point, still 35 feet both directions, make a radius, or you draw it square, that's what I did on the bottom, if you went back 35 feet on that right side and the left side, you go into the corner of the people's property more than if you drew a radius around there.
See, this is the circle one, this is the square one.
But then you got these places that have curbs, and you've got places that we have just an asphalt street, and there's no curbs.
So do you wanna say, so you want it to be from, within 35 feet of the edge of the intersection? I, I'm just trying to think of a word.
That's what we, that's what we.
Well, I would question too, places that's a T-intersection or is an offset intersection?
Yeah, that's a problem.
There you go.
Or has a private drive, do we count that?
What you do in this intersection out here, you come back here, you won't even be into the grass over here, I measured this and it was about 75 feet across.
That's what Gary kept saying, he kept saying.
So you're five feet out in the street yet and you haven't even got to the, so I mean, there are all, there's so many variables here that, I mean, like I said, when you don't have a curb on an asphalt street, like down in the area, in the town and stuff, different areas, exactly where you do, do you measure off the pavement? Just, yeah, I don't know, or if it's gravel, you got a gravel, gravel street then.
There's a lot of streets that aren't in the center of the right of way anywhere, aren't there?
That's true, could be. I mean, 7th Street, where's it? Up here.
Right.
Where do you, where would you go off of? It's almost to the property lines anyways, some places.
Within feet of it.
So yeah, if you wanna leave the 35 feet in there, and you're gonna tell somebody it's within 35 feet, we gotta know, is it or isn't it, you know, all they gotta do is say it's not, um, yeah, how you gonna prove whether it is or not if you don't really know where to go off of and start?
Well, if you say the edge of the intersection, at least you know where it's overlap, wherever it's overlapping would be the edge, right?
Okay.
I'm just.
Yeah, I know.
Guessing at words here.
I think you take like, like I'm saying though, if you're on 7th Street, a lot of that is right, some of that sidewalk has only got about three or four more feet of grass than you have pavement, so now you're really into these people's private property probably 25 feet. It works great for 90% of the streets.
Yeah. Well, what do you think it should say?
I don't, I don't really know, I thought the edge of the pavement, but then like I say, you get the edge of pavement some places. Where do we wanna mess with any of it? Do we wanna just maybe stay out on public right of way and not public, personal property? I, I don't know, but we still gotta have a point to come off of on that right of way.
When you're trying to get from the corner?
You know, and some things in that 35 feet are obstructive to your vision, but there's things, uh, there's times you can be a half a block down the street with a wrong type of a bush down there, that's out of the 35 feet, and if you're looking down to view, it can obstruct things too. I just kinda drew this so you get an idea of where the 25, 35s and all that stuff goes.
Well, this, this, um, 35 feet from curb is the square line?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it doesn't matter, that's just squared, straight in on both sides, the other one is the same, same 35 feet, but that just has a radius of point out there.
Well, like my property, I have that small lot on that corner, that's gonna be taking a bigger chunk out of mine right off the corner, correct?
It's your lot, that North Street has a larger right of way on it, that's 90 something feet, 92 feet or something like that up there, so you have more right of way out there than most.
Yeah.
Yeah, we might not even get to your property if you, if you did this up there.
Okay.
It'd all be out in the right of way. That's what I mean, yeah, there's just so many different.
Variables.
Yeah. Now you could say anything that's out there in the corner lot, like where the hydrant sits or something, and people decorate all that stuff, you can do that, but then, you don't have that up in the north in the town, you don't have that when there's no sidewalks, so you still need a guideline of where to measure.
On a normal corner, whatever that may be.
Normal corner, yeah.
Um, will the 35 feet.
That's what these are.
Of the edge of the intersection be correct?
Do what?
I said, on a normal intersection, if it reads, within 35 feet of the edge of the intersection, would that be correct? On a normal.
Are you calling the edge of the intersection, drawing that out, taking the radius off the curb, like I put that 11-foot mark?
Yeah.
Yes, if you did that on those type of streets, that'd be fine, I think that's taken, and I think that's what that originally was kinda made, to be 35 feet off the curb lines and stuff, but you got them certain areas, if somebody wants.
I guess you can say 35 feet.
Of the curb line?
Of the street edge.
True, but most time when you send out notice on these things, it's things that are planted right on the corners.
Oh, she's, she is right, she said, it can say curb line even if there's not a curb.
Cause that was a term he was using, and that makes sense, curb line, you know where that'd be.
If we had a curb, where it would be, within 35 feet of the curb line of any intersection.
Should be, could be.
I mean, nothing, it's not gonna be perfect.
No, it's not gonna be perfect, it's not gonna.
No way.
Well, when Gary was here, he was giving examples of, there was no clear cut weight on any of this, so, we just have to make it the most clear that we can.
Yeah. And how it would work as a curb line is any intersection.
Yeah, I think that's what we should do.
Okay.
Of the intersection, right?
Of the curb line of any intersection.
Any, okay. Of the curb line.
Of any intersection. Of any intersection.
Really, I think the 35-foot thing is mainly pertaining to bushes, isn't it?
Well, it's 30 inches.
The trees, the trees need to be eight-foot or 12-foot or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Well, this says tree or bush.
Yeah, it says tree, the bush does not exceed 30 inches above the top of the curb nearest tree or bush.
So if you don't have a curb, you're going to be 28 inches high.
Okay, we're not going to go there.
Please don't live on a corner lot.
We're just going to measure from the ground. We're not making exceptions for that.
I don't necessarily like the way it includes streets and alleys. I mean, I could make an argument either way.
Alleys?
But we treat alleys like they're not streets when it suits us. And then there are situations where, like this, we're treating it like it is a street. I feel like it's a bit of having our cake and eating it too.
Probably a lot of alleys that are worse than some of the...
They are.
That's true, but until, you know, I feel like we don't treat alleys like they're streets, like I'm saying, in a lot of ways. I'm okay with...
Just yours is a street.
That's my, bit of my beef is that unless we're going to like enforce traffic rules like it's a street, I don't like treating it like it's a street.
Well, this is more, this is more in line with allowing emergency vehicles to get through. I think, that's, that's what we're treating alleys like in this situation, where, where they trim, they trim their bushes, their trees, so emergency vehicles can get by more easily.
So the alley itself won't be treated like a street because there's no curb line, et cetera?
Right.
Just, a lot of them have, like yours has a radius coming in.
Mm-hmm. Well, I wonder because if there's, I mean, yeah, I see what you're saying.
But really, the trees should be trimmed in the alleys.
They should.
Or bushes.
Try to find a 20-foot alley.
Yeah.
Right away in an alley, 20-foot wide, and you're likely to get 12.
Yeah.
So are we happy with 1885 with an amendment on C that says 35 feet of the curb line of any intersection? Of curb line of any intersection? Of the curb line of any intersection?
Yeah, of the curb line of any intersection.
Are you okay with the rest of it?
What was, what was the old ordinance? Excuse me.
That is the old ordinance, exactly.
It wasn't, wasn't lower that, lower than that?
Oh, this, 16 was down to 14, right? And before that, it was probably 12, wasn't it?
There was 12 in one place in the code book and 14 in a different place. Don't ask me why. This one's, this one I think said 14 and the next one said 12 or vice versa. I, they were not the same.
Well, what have they got on these bridges? These CDL guys know what the height is on a bridge.
13, 13.9, they told me, that's what they said at the meeting. 13 foot nine is the min, I mean, the truck can be 13 foot nine.
Right. So why should we get any taller than, where a semi's or, and they ain't got to go through a tunnel?
To allow for growth of the tree after they cut it.
So they wouldn't have to cut it.
To allow for the growth of the tree after they cut it? You cut it, you're going to gain a foot on a lot of these trees you cut in the next year of new growth coming back on them.
But it'll be going up, it'll get taller.
No, they grow down.
And then the second one is?
The limbs that you're going to worry about, there you're going to cut off. They're not going to grow that much in time. We're going to ruin the looks of all the trees in town. If we can't, if we can't stay with what a semi goes through, it's legal in the state, then we're cutting too much tree off.
The second thing is when we get ice, those trees go down. They, those branches will go down and be below that 14-foot.
I just figure 14 was a good number. This extra two feet, I think, isn't fair to the trees. It isn't going to make that much difference in the work that has to be done to maintain them.
I agree with Terry. And, and I'd jump subjects again. I still, we didn't address the issue of obstructing light from any streetlight on this ordinance.
Okay, Dave, remember at that meeting?
I feel like that's the most vague thing in the world. All trees obstruct light from a streetlight. That's kind of part of their reason for existence. So how do we start defining obstructing? I mean, that's so much in the eye of the beholder.
Mm-hmm.
Seems like a lot of whataboutism, whataboutisms can come out of that.
There's trees in my end of town, that's all that's there, is a tree, the light, and there's trees wrapped all the way around it.
I mean, I imagine there's an engineering term for the amount of light that it's supposed to cast on the ground for the height, you know, a geometric thing. I don't know what that term is, but, I mean, I don't see how we could really say, with, I mean, unless the tree is physically underneath that light of the beam, they all obstruct it somehow. And some of these lights, especially the newer nickel metal hydride ones or the LED ones, just spray light everywhere. They aren't very directional. So I think trees serve kind of a valid purpose in some of that, containing some of that light pollution. But that's my two cents. So I don't know that, how we can enforce obstructing in a vague term. I don't know what happened at the meeting.
Well, Gary Gennofinger, you want to share what Gary said?
I don't really think, I don't really think that's obstructing, you know, letting it get under each light. I don't think any of that's really obstructing.
Or beside or anything. There's no like magic 10 feet, 5 feet, whatever, from the can or whatever itself?
They were just worried about if it was obstructing the light at the intersection.
So it wasn't, wasn't lighting the curbs and stuff?
Yeah, it wasn't. Their big thing was everything at the meeting, they were worried about what it was doing at the intersection.
Okay.
So that you could see. That was why they thought intersection was the main word here, because it was the light to the intersection.
And I think this, like a lot of things, it's all about consistency of enforcement. I think that's all, anybody really wants is to be consistent.
Right.
So...
And that was their...
That's why it didn't get changed a whole lot, because after discussion, it was hard to make it clearer. So, and it is, you know, it is a judgmental call a lot, because obstructing, what is obstructing?
Right.
So...
Well, there are a lot of corners where the bushes obstruct.
And one would hope common sense would rule the day, because there are lots of spireas and junipers and things that are obviously all the heck over the corner.
Well, then that's kind of what Gary said, is that he has to use common sense in application of this.
But you also, also it obstructs your line of vision for the traffic.
We should have something...
There's a number in my area that, that should have some sort of ticketing, you know, like a suggestion sort of ticket because of the hazard of accidents.
Writing letters. And we can do that.
Yeah, I think that.
To make sure we get the letters out.
And then if they don't, if the guys have to go out and do it themselves, then we can charge them for it. There's also a stop sign in my area that's obstructed.
No, wait, I, we, we were, when we talked about the crews doing it, we didn't say that we were going to bill it back. That's kind of a whole different conversation.
You mean with the bushes or?
Yeah, trees, bushes and trees. When we said, do you want the city to start taking?
We weren't talking about bushes. We were just talking about trees.
But we, but we weren't ever talking about charging it back to the landowner. We didn't, we didn't have that conversation.
Not, not, not the generic, where we were going to come through and trim trees, no.
No.
Just the bushes.
I was just saying that you sent them that letter requesting a couple, three times, and they still don't do it, and it is a hazard. I'm not saying, send them a letter, and if they don't get it done in two weeks, then charge them, no. I'm saying go through the, because people go vacation, people do this, people do that, but you give them a warning to do it. But if it is a hazard on a corner, you know, and I'm not saying, charge them 100 bucks. I'm saying 20 bucks. If you have to come out and do it, you know, it's going to be worth it or not. That's just a suggestion.
I would, I would rather we contract the whole thing out after, after a process of warnings and procedures and due diligence, then we contract the whole blessed thing out to people who know how to trim trees, so they don't kill off a bunch of trees. Because I feel like a bunch of trees, I don't feel like we have the expertise to adequately be arborists as the city of Marysville.
Or the time.
Or the time, correct.
If we want to be, our street department doing that.
And then charge, is that what you're saying?
Okay, so, so now we're at this ordinance.
Continue.
That we're going to hopefully pass and talk about what, how they're supposed to be trimmed. But we did say in that last meeting that we voted to, or you guys voted, to have the city start trimming trees. We didn't discuss charging anyone, and we didn't discuss going throughout the town. So that's a whole nother discussion. Should we pass these ordinances and then talk about it more?
What is the standard height for trees? Like you were saying, 14 feet? And it's at 16?
For bridges and stuff, for semis.
No.
It's 14 feet. I don't know why we got to have a picket fence along our streets where we've got nice trees now. To take the, that two-foot of tree is going to make a whole town look like a picket fence.
Did we talk to our arborist about this? What's her name?
Kim Bomberger.
Kim Bomberger. Did we talk to her about the 14 versus 16-foot tree?
Um, no, she's mentioned the growth of a foot, and we were right in line, I mean, 16 feet wasn't out of the question. Uh, we're having, we're, we're having people trim up to 20 feet when we do the chip and seal. I mean, that's, and they've been doing it and we've been, we've been asking them if they want to do it, or if they don't do it, we'll come and do it.
I thought the 16-foot was supposed to cover the chip and seal.
No, 20, 20 feet.
And the 16 was due to the trash trucks?
Just, or 14-foot.
Everything coming through.
Semis and everything else are 14.
But there are power li, or cable lines that are lower than that?
Yep. We hit them. We've torn a couple down since they redone them. They've set them higher, so.
If we could trim all the trees, then everybody could be serious about getting the wires. Because they're still going to be lower than that.
All righty. Well, what do you guys want to do? Right now it's a 16 feet? What do you think?
50.
I'm going to throw it out. Move to approve ordinance 1885.
With that amendment on C?
With the amendment on the 35 feet of any curb.
Of the curb line.
Curb line.
Of any intersection.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Okay.
We're not including the 16-foot in this.
Yeah, it is. It's in there as is.
As it is.
So he presented it with that amendment to C only. So should we do a roll call vote and see what happens?
Sure.
Boss?
Yes.
Pippiya?
No.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
No.
Frye?
No.
Schroller? Throm?
Yes.
Barnes?
No.
Oh my gosh, do we have a four-four tie?
Yes, ma'am.
How tall is this ceiling? I just have to ask the question.
Eight feet, eight and a half.
And how tall is that ceiling in there?
14 feet?
At the, at the, at the highest point, you think that's 14 feet?
14, 16, yeah.
Yeah.
Or you think it's 16?
I don't think it's 16. Think a picture of basketball goal, it can't be more than four feet higher than the rim of the basketball goal, just 10 feet. That's an easy way to figure height.
We're just guessing at this point. If you want me to measure it, I will.
No, I just wanted to kind of get an idea of how high 16 feet is. But you think it's at the very center of that beam out there?
Would be 14.
It'd be 14.
That'd be 14.
You think that's higher than 16 feet?
I'm six feet tall.
You think 16 feet is higher than that?
Yes.
Okay. I'll vote no. Sorry. So, so, so does anybody else want to make a change?
No.
Does somebody want to make an amendment? Make a different offer? Different ordinance? Make a different motion, maybe?
I'm, I'm good with the 14-foot. I'm good with that.
You want to make it 14 on A1 and change C as well, amending C as well?
That's a 35.
That's the curb line thing.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call? Boss?
Yes.
Pippiya?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Frye?
No.
Schroller?
Yes.
Throm?
No.
And Barnes?
Yes.
Okay, now what do we have?
We've got 6.2.
6.2, okay. So, did we start at 14 feet?
I guess not.
So, so Kevin, we started this at 14 feet, right?
Yep.
And we decided we'd raise it, so all we did now is, well, we did improve the language of the code book, so.
Yes.
There's progress. Okay, so on 61886, now we have that at 16 in A. So I don't know if, when you make your motion, if you want to change it to 14 as well.
Please, I don't want to be too different on this.
I think that's the only place it states it in A. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1886 with A changed to 14 feet?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 1886, changing the height to 14 feet instead of 16.
In A, okay. Is there a second? Is there a second? Oh, man. I guess it'll die from the back for a second. So is there another motion?
Not America.
Yes.
I think if you're reading this ordinance, if there was one thing in there that would protect somebody who, who has a dead tree, that it'll never be a hindrance to the city or the street, if it's on their property back far enough, it'll never hurt their house or nothing, then this shouldn't comply, shouldn't, somebody shouldn't be able to walk in and say, you got to get rid of that tree because it's dead.
Well, it says, overhanging any street or right-of-way.
As long as it's, but it also says...
Or obstruct the view of, or any street intersection.
To me, it doesn't allow somebody to have some, it leaves room for someone to come in and tell somebody what they got to do with something that really isn't any of their business.
So are you talking about like, on, like the 1, 2, 3, 4, 6 line where it says, owners shall remove all dead, diseased, dangerous trees or broken and decayed, was constant menace to the, you don't like that line?
No, the safety of the public is fine. I just think that the, the city shouldn't have the right to prune a tree that isn't going to be on their prop, it's outward, it's theirs to worry about.
Which part is, so in A, every tree owner, every owner of a tree overhanging any street, so that means any tree overhanging a street is covered in A. And then B, it says, when such tree constitute a hazard to life and property. So it's not saying your tree out in the middle of a 10-acre field, that if it falls over, it's just going to hit grass. It's talking about if it's going to hurt somebody or if it is going to hurt property. That's, those are the two situations.
Oh. This isn't going to give somebody a right to say, there's, you've got a dead tree back there, it might fall on your house, and we're going to take over about this and remove the tree and charge you for it. Has nothing to do with the street, but it's life or limb.
Hazard to life and property.
Would a, like an emerald ash bore or something like that fall under this rubric?
That's a, that's a public nuisance, right? I mean, that's a disease, yes.
So if somebody had a tree obviously suffering from emerald ash bore that was 30 feet into their property?
If it was going to...
requires removal?
If it was going to cause...
A menace.
Uh, constitute a hazard to life and property.
So it would constitute a hazard to other property, as in other trees? Is that the argument there?
So, it would constitute a hazard to other property as in other trees? Is that the argument there?
That one says, "Remove all dead or diseased trees," which constitutes a menace to the safety of the public, would remove ash be a?
But if it's, how much of a danger to the public if it's not on the right-of-way or it's on private property, is that still considered a danger?
It's contagious.
Hiding hazard, yeah. Is it the contagion that makes it dangerous, or is it the, a dead tree can fall over that makes it dangerous?
I guess that this was probably written back when we were having all the elm disease, and it was because of the disease that was killing all the trees. They had to remove those trees. I don't know. Or pine wilt. They had to remove the trees so that the disease didn't.
And usually we would find something like that. I couldn't, I can't spot Emerald Ash bore, infested tree until it dies. Or if the property owner goes, "Hey, is this, is this a thing?" Usually, the property owner says, comes to the city and asks for help. Or the neighbor, if they think the tree's falling onto their property. We don't go around inspecting people's property, trees on their property unless asked.
Well, I just, you know, I, I think it's always good to define the edges of things, and so when you start getting into this, whether it's diseased or dangerous, well, I mean, who makes that determination? Is that a tree board decision? Is that an arborist that's on contract with the city? I mean, who, who gets to make that call? There's lots of trees that part of it dies and the other part lives for fifty years. Who's to say? I mean, to me, when you don't have a good way of defining the edge of things, you best not mess with it. But that's me.
But a dead tree can take out power lines, take out fences, take the neighbor's roof, hit the neighbor's roof. Maybe if a neighbor had a tree that would look like it was going to fall on your house, you might want to say something.
We did have one of those, and we did say something, and they took care of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then I would say then the city maybe could.
But it was over the right-of-way and hanging over the neighboring property. But this, I mean, what if it's not? What if it's not in the right-of-way?
Well, then.
What if it's not?
Then destroy anything.
Yeah, what if it's just going to fall in your big backyard, is that?
Then I don't think.
Whose problem?
And I don't think.
Then would it constitute a hazard?
That's my thing is, though, I mean, well, if we have a vehicle up on blocks with its windows broke out in the backyard.
That's a hazard.
We say that's a hazard, so, that's why, I mean, we set a precedent of doing that on private property. I don't know. Just hash it out.
When they took the tree out behind our house that they were redoing, I can't remember what kind of tree it was when they got it down. And it was huge. The stump it was huge, and when they cut it off, there was only this much all the way around. The rest of it was completely hollowed out the inside. So, yeah. It was kind of a lesson learned watching the neighbors, so.
Oh, yeah, there was a, on the south of me, the neighbor's, a big tree. But you could tell half of it, half of it was still alive, but it, it fell, at least it didn't take any power lines. But it could have.
Well, it does say that, it does say that they have the right to have a hearing in that B. That's the one that's on the private property. The other one is overhanging the street in the right-of-way. Have we had any motion on eighteen eighty-six yet?
We had a motion, but no second.
Okay.
I'll second.
It hasn't changed.
What has our?
The height is off, the only thing that changed from sixteen to fourteen.
The initial, who made the initial motion?
Jason.
Has anything but the original height changed?
The original one was fourteen feet.
So, nothing has changed.
So, nothing's changed in the contract. Yeah, if you go back to fourteen, this is the one that was fourteen foot. Right. Yeah, the other one was twelve. So, there's nothing changed, so it's just an old boy.
This is exactly word for word.
Except for the fourteen, the sixteen that went to fourteen, so if we're going back to fourteen.
We don't need to make any changes?
Make motion, it's, it's just dead in the water. Just like it was.
So, who, who made, you're going to withdraw your second?
I retract my second.
Okay, so that will not be done. Okay, so eighteen eighty-five, we did get done.
Yes, eighteen eighty-six has no need.
Okay, in A, alright. Mercy, okay. Now, we're at the sewer property on eleven thirty-nine Keystone Road. And our city attorney gave us our three option, our four options that are listed on page twenty-eight. I did go out there. Did you get anybody else to go out there and look at Keystone? Is the manhole that they have to connect to right by West property, over the hill a little bit, by West, the West property?
Yeah.
And so.
It's up there about where Ron Grounder's driveway is.
So, it's actually a little bit over the hill?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's at Temps's mailbox?
Yeah, I guess it would be.
Shelby Temps.
Or maybe. Maybe I looked at the wrong manhole. My, the manhole I looked was across from Wes.
That's too far.
There's another manhole out there?
Yeah, further east.
Okay, so the manhole is right by Shelby Temps, so Shelby's, he was within the hundred feet then? Okay, and however, Brian would not have been.
No.
And in this situation, when they, when they connect to that manhole, they'll have to bore underground to that manhole, right? Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just last week, in Manhattan paper was the Elijah Edition of twenty-four lots. Had the resolutions in the paper for sewer, water, street. For sewer, it came to two hundred ninety-three thousand, so divided by twenty-four lots. That's twelve thousand two hundred and eight dollars per lot. I'm going to pass this around. I've got the, the ordinance are there. And then what, I know I'll show, so show water and street and what the total would be. Give you an idea of the way it's handled. Usually it's handled.
Did you ever have a look and see if that, if you could even move it a hundred feet?
Can't send us, you can't.
I didn't think so because the hill drops too fast. I thought it did.
It's, it's a shallow manhole and there's, and that till, yes. I think they extended it as far as they could.
As it could. I guess, I know it's shallow there where Shelby's at.
So, what is that? Pay for the extension of the sewer? That's not a possibility. Or is that for us to pay for his entire line? Which way is that?
Well, thinking that, that Craig doesn't, I mean, he could be talking about either, because we also have the, what I call option to extend the Keystone. That's, that's always an option. That's what it's designed for, to bring Keystone line from Keystone Edition and bring it to its entirety, or bring it to Keystone Road.
So, you think that's what he's talking about?
That could be. That's the only option for extension of our sewers that makes sense.
So, that's the next phase?
Yeah.
So, the city could do that?
City could do that.
Cost of hundreds of thousands of dollars?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so number two is negotiating an arrangement with the property owner to pay a portion of the cost to adequately extend the sewer to the property. So, that would probably be, again, was it two twenty correct? Was it two hundred and twenty feet?
We're about two hundred, we were about two hundred and twenty feet away, yes.
Yeah, versus the one hundred, okay. So, just to kind of say, "We'll pay for the one twenty." Reject any financial response for extending the sewer and deannex the property if they refuse to comply or create a benefit district to assess the property for the cost of extension of the sewer lines. Wouldn't, or kind of go with one, the benefit district go to one?
No, because pay for the sewer versus creating a benefit district. Yeah, basically, either we pay for it or we have them pay for it with the benefit district. And then have them pay it back. The assessments, yes.
And of course, there, the city pays nothing, the property, with those assessment, the property owner pays.
We would pay it upfront and then they would pay for it, yeah.
What'd we do with Bloomer out there? Was that the same deal?
Split the costs. I believe we paid for the materials and they did the installation.
They did the installation, yeah.
And a couple different nuances in there, but.
I think we'd pay, ended up paying for half the sewer stuff, and then they wanted that additional loop, so they paid for the additional loop, do you remember that, to get the pressure they wanted? But we, we paid for half the sewer and then we did the assessment for the other half, or, not assessment, it was a.
Impact fee.
Impact fee.
Yeah.
So. Did you find out how much it's going to cost to have them run that two hundred and twenty feet sewer line?
They haven't given me a number on that. They kept, they said a couple thousand, they said, came out with a number, another number, but they wouldn't, they wouldn't nail it down.
I guess my feeling on it, Brian Crockland's probably about the same amount of distance from that sewer line as what they do. And he'd had no problem putting his line into that sewer with a grinder pump. So, I think if you want city sewer, the manhole's there, it's your responsibility to get it there. If not, put in your lagoon.
And we have tried, we have tried to help with setting them up for when Keystone does go. Whatever time in the future it does get extended out, to set them, that house, that lot up for the best connection they could. So, they're bringing that under some guidance from the city and their plumber to, to make sure they're, they're ready to go when that does happen.
So, you, so are they able just to have a, a lagoon system out there and still be part of the city?
They, I think, they would probably go with a lateral.
Can they, they can have laterals and still be part of the city?
Right, but they would have to be signed off on by, by our.
Senator.
Well, no, by our sewer supervisor.
Was that a possibility?
He doesn't like the idea.
He can't?
Yes.
Why, what doesn't he like about it? Is it, you know, the laterals?
Um.
Problem?
One, the, the whole reason why the sewer was put out there was because everybody else's private sewer failed. Every, every single one of them. The second is that other people in the area have already, without argument, just hooked on.
Other people what?
Have just hooked on. They, they didn't, they knew it was necessary. The Crocs just hooked on and, and put the sewer to our sewer. And it's only fair we treat everybody the same. I mean, those, those are two of the main points.
Well, there's nothing wrong with it though, right? I mean, there's really, I mean, considering we don't have the sewer to them, we don't have that next phase done. So, we're, we don't have it readily accessible.
Let's say, and there is a negative, if they were to put laterals in, let's say, in the next five years, the council gets the itch to extend. Once they extend to within one hundred feet, they have to crush their laterals, so that, however much money.
Are they aware of that?
Yes.
And they still would prefer to do that?
Actually, they've set it up so they could put a grinder pump in. They've been, they've been working towards a grinder pump, so.
Well, that's their choice. They're aware that when it does get developed, that they would have to take it out.
Right.
If they're aware of that.
Right, so if you guys want to just, your decision is to, you hook on, you hook on, that's fine. But not pay for it. I mean, that's all you got to say, according to this memo we put out. But, yeah.
So, what you said before, though, ones that already have hooked up, they already, they paid theirs. They paid it.
Yes.
Crocs did, Temps did.
Well, Temps would have been within a hundred feet, so.
But where Ross Wright lives been.
Harmers.
Harmers, yeah. They paid for theirs all the way up, too.
That, well, wouldn't the sewer line gone right in front of their house, though? Because this, this manhole isn't in front of their house, the house.
It's up, it's east of the Harmers Drive.
It's east.
When they built that place, they paid for it.
I don't see anything other than it's only fair that they pay for it.
That's how I feel.
Yeah.
But someday on the line.
So, so, so you're willing to do number three, and they deannex if the property refuses to comply? You're going to deannex them and lose the property tax dollars? You're going to take that risk?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
What's the city out, if the city picks up the tab to get our existing sewer line to their property line? Well, how many feet is that?
I think that's a two twenty versus the one hundred?
Yeah, the, it would be a hundred and, a hundred and twenty feet, which we can't extend the sewer that far.
Why not?
Because the sewer, okay, the, the sewer's been extended as far as it can. It is a shallow manhole. So, to get a gravity fed or anything to it, they have to do the grinder pump line to, because the manhole is basically right at the beginning or on top of the hill. We can't run any more sewer down that hill.
Okay, well, I'm having trouble figuring out, when you finish Keystone and everything, it's still going to be the same height. It's just there'll be a pump coming from Keystone, is that it?
Yeah, so the difference is, and I'll get a map, right now, what we're talking about is the manhole that's right, right about here. There's a manhole right here. We can't go any farther this way, which would be the simplest way to do it if we could. The Keystone Edition down here, it goes, the line goes to about here. So, we would have to bring it, where's that line? There's a draw somewhere that we would. So, we would keep going this way?
That way.
This way?
That keep going, right there, right there.
This one right here. We try to bring it up here, and that would get it closer, and that's where this property, or this is designed to catch this property right here. So, that would be the ideal way to do it, but to extend this main all the way that way just for that one property? I mean, you can see the money.
But we could still provide them a pipe. They'd have to have the pump to pump it there.
Right. Do you want to?
I don't think we offered to pay for the pump, not the.
I didn't say that, I'm just saying.
But the, the pipe itself.
The pipe, just the hole for them to shoot it into. For us to do that, then that'd be the way with number two that you could negotiate with them about it.
How far is that?
You ought to get together with somebody here and see what they all agree on, try to do it the cheapest way for everybody.
I don't know how far. Have you ever done the measurement, David?
Yeah, it seems like from there to the corner is somewhere fifty, eight hundred feet.
Where's it going for eight hundred feet?
Eight hundred feet from, from where it ends to the corner.
You mean from this, where this one ends?
Yes.
To that corner?
Yeah.
Eight hundred feet?
Yeah.
But it doesn't go to the corner, it goes up the draw.
Yeah.
Yes, but you wouldn't want to go, you wouldn't want to go up that draw yet. You'd probably go to it, there is water when you go to that.
Right.
You'd have to do that to go up yet.
Yeah.
Then up the road. That, at that draw, some here would go on up to Taco Bell and everything else.
Right.
I would be wanting. All that could come out and do there some here.
Someday.
Right.
Yeah, but you just need to go up to the manhole, then go up down to waterway to the corner.
And go up.
He's saying, he's saying it's eight hundred feet. He wanted to know how many feet it was?
That's a long ways, yeah. That's a brand new line, then. I'm talking about.
That eight hundred feet just gets it to Keystone, it doesn't get it to his house, does it?
No, just to his property line, our existing line, just to his property line. How far is that, in a straight line?
How, how many feet would it be from where this ends here to get it to his property line?
To serve that property.
You mean to the manhole to his property?
Or to his property.
East or west, which way you go?
From, from Keystone.
Be on the east side.
To, to serve his property.
Say a quarter mile.
At least.
Yeah, but you probably grab a few feet down to the, probably his property line pretty easy. With manhole, we'd have to go up that road to the west, a long way, just everything, gravity flow through that manhole.
He said twelve hundred.
Wow. For that kind of line, we can't afford to annex it. I've got to go with three.
Well, we could just do it to the man, the existing manhole that, we could pay for the hundred. the 120 extra feet to get.
That's the part I'm talking about.
Oh. Yeah, I thought you were trying to say draw another, all the way to the, where the other sewer line ends.
Oh, no. Just to give him a vein that he can shoot into.
Oh, yeah, well, that's the 220 versus 100.
You're just going to extend his, his line on into the.
And how much does that cost, the 220?
Well, that was what I was, he was trying to get, he doesn't have an amount.
And that, and that's one of those things, I guess, where Darlene is coming from, like if we would do it the way Manhattan did it, is we do the 120 feet for it and then we would turn around and assess some 100% of that cost for that 120 feet.
Actually, that's pretty apt.
You basically assess, you basically do an assessment for one lot.
Yeah.
For what it costs to get him over to our sewer.
Would be a force made for that, two inch?
Two, it'd probably be about two inch or less. Yeah. But that, I mean.
We, we need to remember that we have never, that whole Keystone addition, we did not do according to that plan.
That's because I was not yet.
Well, I'm just saying.
And after I got on.
We need to remember, and to be honest, when we, when we connect that up to Keystone, you really think we're going to 100% assess these people? I mean.
We should.
I'm saying, do you really think we will?
We should.
So if it's a thousand bucks, we'd be stupid not to just pay the thousand dollars. We're at a, we're at a disadvantage because we don't know what the amount is.
But at the same time, it's a terrible precedent to set to, cause the next time, who knows how much it's going to cost and they're going to expect to pay nothing to.
Well, they're going to pay that to get to the 100 feet. They're going to pay the 100 feet.
But what if it costs us $30,000 to get up within 100 feet?
I thought you said it's going to be like a thousand dollars.
This time.
This time.
I'm just saying, next time.
There's another lot off to the east of it.
Yeah. Well, until we develop all that, I mean, so we planned badly, let's be honest.
Yeah.
We planned very poorly. We thought we'd build 140 homes out there and it never came to fruition.
Yeah.
So now we're in a half-developed sewer area.
Yeah.
But we want people to have built out there. We want them annexed in. It's not like we don't want people to keep adding on out there.
But the way we would do that, like what Darlene's saying is you would, you would do more of that sewer line and you'd figure out which lots we're going to feed into that and each lot would be assessed their portion of that project.
And then, so then you have a total discrepancy because these lots were only assessed a thousand.
That's done.
I'm just, I'm just pointing this out. So now you have a totally, you'll have, you'll never develop these lots because all of these lots were only, had to pay a thousand dollars.
We're not following that assessment plan anymore, that's done, so.
No, this.
We've got to figure out what we're going to do from here.
This Keystone, we're still following, aren't we, Austin?
I thought we weren't assessing anything on any of them.
We're not doing the thousand in Keystone either?
It's not any of them. So we've got to figure out what we're going to do.
Dave, didn't we look at those? You haven't been assessing Keystone addition for the thousand dollars? No, but I meant.
I have worked the land.
You have, we have been. A thousand.
Since all this came up, if you've done something different, but.
Well, this, that Keystone addition is totally separate from the east side sewer district. Those are totally different ordinances.
There is no ordinance on the thousand dollars, remember? That was a verbal agreement. And it is part of this east side because they paid the $5,800 for that entire area.
The entire, that thousand dollars, we don't have documented.
They paid, no, we don't. Just in emails, we paid fif, they each, they paid $5,800, just like everybody else, for that entire place. And then the verbal agreement was, every home in there built would pay an additional thousand to us to make up because there were a lot of lots there.
So you believe that east, well, this was never in writing.
Yeah, but the thing, the 5,000 was that it's part of the east side sewer district. Yes, it was. So that went away.
So now, going back to my saga here, so these people will have no, no assessment. And you think anybody's ever going to build over there fully assessing those? I mean, now we even have a worse situation. Not a worse situation, but a reality check is that these 140 lots will have zero assessments. And these, you're going to say you're.
Which was a pretty dumb thing to do.
I know, but I'm just saying, we have to be realistic.
Those are part of 140 though. It wasn't that much.
Yeah.
All of this?
Yeah.
So we're never going to assess any of them? That's what you're telling me? Well, then, no. No, but, so when we did this east side sewer assessment, those 140 homes included all of this? So even when we extend the sewer.
That's not in the city, is it?
Yeah.
But it's not platted or anything.
So going back to what you're saying, it ends here. To extend it up to there, we can't charge anybody.
Dave, isn't that platted all the way up to Keystone?
That's what he's saying in here.
Yeah, yes, I thought it was. Yeah, the roads and everything are in it.
Phase two is platted?
The whole thing is not final plated, it's preliminary plated.
Yeah. It's just preliminary, but.
But it's still plated.
Yeah. It always preliminary plated, the whole way.
But that's the whole thing about.
Yeah, I see, cause the road, the roads in there and the, the water, the sewer, the gas, all that's already.
But the sewer line does, isn't complete.
No.
Cause the sewer line ends here.
Jeff Keating's, yes.
That's where the platy, that's where the platid area stops.
So from their perspective, these, these people here, they've already been included already in a sewer district. And, and you believe you're going to put another sewer district on them even though they've already been included? I don't even know if that's legal. We've, our, that property's already been included.
I think that's a question for a lawyer.
Yeah.
He says something about a benefit district, but I don't know what he means.
Well, if, I'm going back to this. If, when we extend this up to here and we have to, the city has to take all that cost, I don't know how you could assess these two people.
Right. Cause it's going to bring, bring it all the way down from his house, well, from that manhole there, all the way down to past the intersection.
Man, oh, man.
And if you get that up to that corner or wherever, and you open up development into Ring, that goes in there too.
Yeah.
Well, Rings was part of the sewer district, that east side sewer district too.
Yeah.
How are we ever going to develop that?
Probably not.
Oh, man.
Just so you know.
Well, I know like the city of Topeka only allows 45 lots at a time to be brought into the city. And, you know, there are over 100,000. I mean, the, the whole thing was not done right, but.
Cause the Ring is, is all of this, right? That Ring trust. So they have already paid their one-time sewer. So now these have already been assessed and this has already been assessed. And we don't have any sewer lines there. That is brutal. Okay. Back to this. How about if we, how about if we go back to them and say, give us a cost of the 220 versus 100 so we know what number we're looking at? Is that fair enough? And bring it to the next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, I want to know what the cost is.
Okay, can you do that, Austin? Get it 220 versus 100 for the manhole? Okay. All right. Let's move on. Let's move on. Notices and hearings, we don't have any. There's a consent agenda, the two items are the CPA letter of, letter of engagement, engagement letter and convention of tourism.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Just second it.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ado? All right. Appropriations ordinance?
Move to approve appropriation ordinance 3709, the amount of $338,382.26.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, I might mention some of the large items. The Blue Cross Blue Shield, that was health and dental. That was $69,905 in payroll, $46,000, $49. And then we paid the first payment on the sewer force, force main replacement and that was a little over $60,000. And then the final payment for the CIPP of $30,962.
You know, I did drive by at Forest Main, they've done a lot of work down there. It looks like they're almost done.
They are.
They're getting ready.
They're cleaning up today and power's heat, they're powering, raking it.
Yeah.
Yeah, looks good. Okay, any other discussion about appropriations ordinance? Roll call?
Boss?
Yes.
Pippiya?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Uh, Schroller?
Yes.
Sorry. Throm? Yes.
And Barnes?
Yes.
Ado?
All right. Austin, do you have anything to report?
Um, I'll just bring up what was, a couple of things that were asked to me from the last meeting. The waterline project, the question was whether we do it all, do it some, or combine it with all the water meters of what, and after discussion with Kent, the idea with the water meters was to do the five-year rotation, or the five-year implementation because it benefits the city to not come up on a straight deadline to get all of them replaced or shorten the timeline of how long these water meters are in the ground. It will, uh, we think it's the best case scenario for the, for our water meters and their longevity. And the sanity at the end of 20, 20 years when we're trying to replace them as we go.
Do you think it's realistic that in 20 years, we'll be still using the technology we have now?
That's, that's why, that's why we've picked the ones we did.
You believe that's.
Because, um, because they have survived over the years. They've, I mean, that's what, they provided the proof that they've been here a while. They're still using the old meters that they started out with, with the new technology. That's, that's the reason why.
Okay. It seems hard to believe that technology's going to work 20 years from now, but okay.
So.
I have a Windows 7 on my computer and. I have to get a new computer.
Yeah.
So are you going to bring that back to us and, or you want direction from the council, whether they want to, you want to go ahead and do the engineering for this, the Laramie section?
Uh, yeah. Direction on how we want to proceed with the waterline projects, whether we want to just do the ones we're already engineered for next year and then push the rest to the year after that? Or do we want to still try to do all of the project next year and just get it engineered?
Well, it seemed like there was a lot of connecting points from the Jenkins and Laramie. It almost looked like it made sense to combine them.
Right.
Because of the, all the little side streets look like they all lined up.
Yep.
It'll be a big project though, $300,000 probably.
Yeah, over, probably over $300,000, but the savings is there, as Tony Dever pointed out when he was here, that while you haven't opened up, you do all these connections and they're brand-new connections rather than putting those three blocks in and then coming back and putting, connecting to existing. And that, connecting to existing costs more money. Because they're not putting it in at that point in time. They're digging it up and they're having to cut holes into it or connect to a, a point that was put in the previous year. So it'll save money in that way. So.
So you guys wanting to go for the big project next year, 2020?
Big project.
Big project.
Okay, so you, you want to bring that engineering back for us to approve?
Okay. Okay. And then I was also asked about alternative places to pile snow. And I was informed that over the years, places to pile snow have been taken away. Just different projects, different things happening. They tried to keep it down here on, on Seventh Street and I forget what other locations they, they told me, they used to dump and now they can't dump anymore. But up on, up by Lakeview and down here on Seventh Street are really the, the main locations. Because, for instance, the other location that we thought of, that has been talked about is at the end of Second and Walnut where we have 55 acres. That would make sense. But it has to be a frozen ground to do it and to drive our trucks on it. If it's any mud at all, our trucks are stuck with snow and whatever's in it. So to, to use Second and Walnut as a reliable location, we would have to do some improvements to the ground.
Are you talking about down there low? In the lowlands?
So, yeah, somewhere in the corner of, uh.
On the other side of the dyke?
No.
No, this side.
No, no, inside, inside.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
He's down by where our water, yeah, our sewer.
What?
No, where we pile dirt. Yeah, well, yeah, where the sewer drains, yes. Down in that area, which we wouldn't need to take up too much of the area, but again, we would have to make improvements.
So what are you talking about, like throwing some rock down?
We'd have to create a road. You would have to create a road.
We can throw rock down?
We would have to put.
There's no base.
There is no base. There's no base. You put, you throw a rock down, it, it gets drove into the, into the ground and you got no road anymore.
Well, how about, can we go, okay, but, so Mayor's will support and recells us, we shouldn't put it there and we're going to spend money to fix the drainage.
That's my whole thing, we're spending money for the drainage.
The field. We, if they say, you have to respect them, they're the ones that walk on the field all the time. Can we take it down to the lake? Can we go down there?
No.
Why not?
It needs to filter out the salt.
It doesn't kill the fish.
Yeah.
Well, how about on the other side of the overpass, we have all that acreage where I wanted to put that disc off course?
Any distance away, on the other side of the overpass? Like as in outside?
Like on the way to the ferry park? We own all that property.
Any, any distance you are adding overtime.
I understand that, but we don't want to.
And decreasing the amount of time we can be out there. We have a limit of 16 hours for people to move snow. That's, we're, we're, we are pushing the limits right now.
Well, you can't just ignore what they say though.
We've, okay, so, and I wish David wouldn't have left because he's the one who's telling me, it's always wet there. We've also created a pathway for the water not to go onto the fields.
Well, I think what we should do is ask Schwab Eaton, that's the answer. Schwab Eaton is doing the drainage study. Ask them.
That's what we're doing.
Okay. Ask them.
Yeah.
Tell them we want to put, saw this snow up there and see what they say.
Is the airport too bad?
Madam Mayor, uh, is there a possibility that somebody could, in good faith, go talk to the railroad and just put it on the end of Seventh Street down here? If nobody's ever talked to railroad, the railroad probably be pretty good about that and it's ideal place to dump, dump the stuff off the street.
That's a good point.
If nobody's talked to them, they're failing.
On North Seventh, you're saying?
I'd say we.
North of Calhoun State.
North of Calhoun, there on Seventh Street.
Where they're putting all the new, nice new dirt, where they're removing all the contaminated Where they're putting all the new, nice new dirt, where they're removing all the contaminated stuff?
Well, that's the old roundhouse, that deal, but, the other way, but it's down there where they're cleaning the rock. There's already contaminated rock there. They'd work something out with you, I'm sure.
What about the old Crosswinds runway? The airport?
The airport.
It's got a base and it's city property and if you're not piling it higher than the hangars, it's not an obstruction.
Is it where they, they...
I mean, we've got grass, but it'll kill, I mean, it'll kill things out there. It'll kill it. It'll kill it.
But we don't, do we, is this out on lease, grass lease?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. I didn't know if the runway itself was, or we just let them?
Well...
Cause I thought this was. I didn't know if the runway itself is, cause this is the runway.
Yeah, I think it's added to that lease.
Is it? Okay, I didn't know where the lease lines were.
Because the farm ground is one guy's and the, and the hay grounds the other. I'd have to look for sure, but...
Solid ground, city property.
Yeah, right.
I think that's, you should consider that though. It's convenient.
It's a part, it's a part of the lease?
I think it is, we have to look.
It will kill the ground.
Yeah.
The salt.
It will ruin all the grass up there.
Then we can build that Crosswinds runway.
The salt will kills. It'll soak in and saturate the ground.
That's why it belongs down here in the old railroad yard.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
Everything's dead there now anyway.
We can ask, what we can do is be told, but ask Schwab Eaton.
Okay.
That, that's my first. Anything else?
Take the, well, I don't know why they're down in committee reports, but...
That's, we didn't know where.
But we had a couple people turn in their resignations I wanna talk about. We're advertising currently for street position for CDL, so we can get some experience. And then we, we haven't yet started conversation about advertising for, for police position. But that needs to be also done.
And a pool manager.
And a pool manager, yeah.
So have we started advertising for a pool manager?
No, as I said in my highlights, we'd do that, we'd start that in the winter, yes.
Well, last year it went so much better because we had our lifeguards by, remember the end of December? She had our lifeguards all hired at Christmas break and that's why we, so we need to start looking for a pool manager. You know, maybe our committee people need to talk to her. The Parks and Rec people should maybe talk to Kathy. Well, just to kind of figure out, you know, I was hopeful she would stay for more than a year. Didn't she just stay one year?
Yeah, just one year.
We paid a lot of schooling.
Right, but she expressed her concerns about continuing on. Part of it, I mean, she did have some health issues, but the managing some of the employees really pushed it over the edge.
I know, but that's gonna be true all, always in that position. I mean, we, I think that the Parks and Rec people should talk, sit down and talk to her and get a handle on this because we can't keep looking for a new pool manager every year. This is not good.
And she was a good manager, I mean, you need a mature person in that position.
So would Parks and Rec sit down and talk to her and find out how, what we can do? You know, maybe you can persuade her back, but even if you can't, find out how we can change...
Exit interviewer.
And we can at least find out from this job what we as a city can do to make this doable. So will you set up a meeting with her if she's willing? Okay. Okay, so I know you were gone, but you didn't do land a lighting, you're gonna bring that back?
I sent them a email, they never contacted me.
Okay, so next meeting?
Yeah, I will try, if they, if they really want it, they're gonna contact me. But I asked them specifically to give me more information and actually show up to this meeting and they didn't.
And then the art center windows?
I'm still working on that. We kind of evaluated the existing windows and they, I don't know how well they'll hold up to refinishing or anything like that. But I've also gotten some reports where, where when they go to refinish and seal and make them weatherproof, they just seal them up so they're not, they're not functioning windows anymore. So I mean, it's, I haven't gotten to sit down and talk with too many contractors about it, but that sounds like, I feel like we should do new windows whichever way we go.
So you're trying to get a wood estimate?
Yeah, like, like the aluminum wood clad where it would match the interior. So it'd be wood on the inside and then a white finish on the outside to match the white on the outside.
Okay. And then, did you do anything with CIPP?
Ken is working on that, yes.
Working on it?
Yep.
And is the access management plan, is he still working on that?
Yep.
For Twelfth Road?
Yep.
So Tony's still working on that?
Yep.
Okay, so one thing we asked for, that fire station information, I think it'd still be helpful for us to have this fire station information and this is why I'm saying, if we go and we find out the locations and the cost and the year built and the size and the contractor, the contractor's the key thing to make sure we bid these contractors, that because if Kenover can do one at ninety square foot and we're estimating ours as a hundred and seventy-eight per square foot, I mean, we need to use their contractor. So I think it'd still be beneficial to find, to do that list of ones that we asked for the other time.
If I had to guess, I'd bet that Kenover a lot of those contractors and stuff did that stuff at a lower rate and probably a lot of the businesses sold that stuff at close to cost probably.
And he probably just did the wood in line built out.
In line built out.
But still, I, I think we need to find out who built this, yeah. And, and to see, you know, it's good for us to know how much other city, this was brought up by you a long time ago, back in September, and I still think that information is beneficial to us in this process. Do you guys all agree? So will you still bring that to us? And then, you know, on the nine twenty-three, in the minutes I read where you were supposed to bring options for the water fountains for the Blue River Trail to the meeting?
I, we just matched, I went ahead and ordered one, just like this one out here, cause that's how we described it and it was a thousand dollars, just like this one. It just, it matched it up, we figured it out, how to do it and I just went ahead with that one, just to set it up as a trailhead, since it was already set up that way.
Okay.
And matching this one with that one means same parts if it ever breaks down. And filters, cause they have filters in them.
Okay, and what?
So, how often do the filters have to be changed?
I don't know that, it has a sensor on it.
Is it a hard water filter too? I'm just thinking as hard as the water is, it might be a frequent maintenance item.
Right.
It's probably not so much hard water, it's probably just more taste, chlorine and...
Yeah.
And then, so I got a call that you never did give that dirt to Joanne Lacy. You told me on nine-nine that you would get dirt to her house for those low spots, for the low spots?
They filled in some of the, I got a picture showing they filled in some of the areas.
But they didn't go talk to her or?
No, they, she said, or no, he, I don't know if that was the time she came out and talked to him.
She called me and said they have not been here since, she heard it on the council meeting at nine-nine, September ninth and she said they have not come out since then.
I got a picture of dirt and them putting dirt in there.
Well, will you go meet with her and check out these low spots? Cause she says she hasn't got any dirt since September ninth.
Okay.
And then did we get the plaque for Don and Liam Stinglemeier? For the flags for, for the cemetery, did we get that done?
Have we ordered that one?
Remember we talked about that, put at the kiosk? The plaque?
I, we'll get that taken...
That was in August we talked about.
Okay.
I can work on that.
So, okay, that was my follow-up. Now Cindy, did anybody else have something for, yes?
Did he say that we were gonna, you were hiring or you had to add for three employees?
No, we only have one in there for one, right.
Oh, okay, I thought you said you had for three people, okay.
Nope, nope. Just the streets in there right now.
Well, then we said, yeah, but then we also said we have to get a pool manager.
Yes, I heard that, I know that, but I thought I understood three and I was wondering who else we were replacing.
Okay. Anything else, Austin? No. Okay, I had everything. Cindy, what, for Austin?
Yes, for Austin.
Okay.
The other night I happened to be downtown, my wife needed to use the restroom, so we went into the Marysville Main Street building, cause it was unlocked with black squirrel might.
And?
There are no outlet covers on the outlets, so some little kid could stick his fingers in along the outlet and shock himself.
Oh my gosh.
Out in the main room.
Out in the hallway?
In the hallway, there's two outlets.
What were they doing, painting it at one point?
Don't ask me, there are no outlet covers on the outlets.
I'll get it taken care of.
And our furnace room down there either needs a padlock on it or a door lock on it.
A furnace room because that door opens up?
That door opens up.
Okay.
Well, thanks for changing the filter at any rate.
Yeah. The water, the controls for the buildings back there, the shut-off of bathrooms and all that's back in that furnace room, so...
Man, that's a good thing to have a lock on.
So we need to get a lock or a padlock.
Anything else, we're really glad you, you went and checked it out, is there anything?
Is the light in the entryway in that, is it motion activated?
Not yet, working on that.
But it will be?
Yes, just a switch, yes, yep.
That's it? That's all you had to report?
Yeah.
Okay, Cindy, did you wanna make some announcements?
I did. When we have, at the end of December, our last meeting is going to be on December twenty-third, which works fine for the holiday, but that leaves over a week of invoices we may get that we would like to pay for the end of the year. So I would like to have, you know, us to just stop the meeting and resume it so we could just do another pay ordinance. And I would like to do that like on the thirtieth if that would work or on Friday, the twenty-seventh in the afternoon. It depends on when you guys can make it work, cause we have to have five of you. So that we could do a second ordinance, it's just easier for audit.
What day is it?
The twenty-seventh is a Friday and the thirtieth is a Monday. And I just wasn't sure if, if you guys wanna think about it and come back, look at your calendars. I wanted to get it out there soon enough.
Do you guys have your Christmas vacations planned yet?
Yeah.
And that's, that's key, that's the key. We need to, we need to have five, so... So you guys wanna come back next meeting and just make a commitment? Or you guys think, can somebody commit now?
I can commit now.
It doesn't matter.
You're, you're all gonna be...
Yeah, whatever you prefer.
Monday works good for me.
The thirtieth? Darlene?
That'd be fine, probably wouldn't make any difference.
You wanna do it just like at seven?
Gina?
Possibly.
Possibly. Will you be in town?
I'll check my schedule.
Probably not.
I'm in town, so don't make any difference.
So we have one, two, you're really probably not here?
I'm, I'm always here.
One, two, three, you said four.
I'll be working, so yeah.
Okay, so we should be, we should have four or five on the thirtieth, so we'll do the thirtieth.
At seven, okay. And then I did wanna say that the council meeting on Veterans Day, which is a Monday, November eleventh, will be on Tuesday because it is a holiday for the city, so everybody knows the next meeting is Tuesday, not Monday.
November twelfth, that's very good to know.
So we still have a council meeting on December the twenty-third?
Yes. The other ones are just for additional invoices that we pay.
Payroll or pay expenses, yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I can remember.
Alright, we will boom on to standing committees. Street, I noticed they listened to that webinar for the US dot, so did they tell you anything about it?
They haven't gotten, they haven't gotten back with me about it.
So who, who all listened to it, just Gary?
Gary and Brian probably.
So the main thing about, I took, my takeaway from that webinar was you can go to that US dot website and they have life cycle cost analysis of different pavement surfaces based on temperatures. I mean, I was like, yes, this is what we need to look at. So that was my big takeaway. So it should be on the website.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything for street? That was my big, yes. We can, those services, I love data. Okay, so water sewer, okay. So, so is this one you need to tell us that you board up at the high school rather than at the St. Gregory's?
Right. They were talking about around St. Gregory's.
But then in the minutes?
Yeah, but they're boring around the high school, trying to get quite a few of the, well, I forget how many.
Four.
Four of them.
Those are the, still the four houses.
Still the four houses.
Out of the basements to the yards.
Yes.
It's just we had the wrong location.
Some of it was a private mess, yeah.
And so that's why those big holes are right there by the high school? I drove by those today and I said, and so it goes all the way down because it went all the way down to Kickaver's?
Well, it's the four houses right across from the high school and like Deb Landals around the corner.
It said like South fifteenth, three oh eight, South fifteenth. I listened, they had a whole bunch of them listed in the highlights, so I drove down there to figure out what they were doing.
The right across and then Deb Landals around the corner on Spring. I know that was one of them. It's kind of a crazy...
But it goes all the way down?
Well, but Kickaver's hole is a different thing.
Oh, okay.
His pit was leaking. That's a different, yeah.
I was sitting there going, we have a lot of holes, but anyway, so you'll clarify that in the minutes?
Yes, that it was on by the high school, not by, and hopefully they'll get the one by St. Gregory's one of these days.
Alright, so that was that. And the only other thing, so when we were at the leak conference, remember that guy was talking to us, Darlene, at lunch? And Diane, I think, were you there too? And he said that, I told him about that, where we have that spring of water on Jenkins and Eighth Street and that you tested and didn't have any chlorine on it, but he said, and he used to work on water sewer before he was city administrator, he said this ground would filter that. And so just because it didn't have chlorine didn't mean it was a water leak. And we just chip and sealed all of Eighth Street. So the last thing we want is to have that water start coming down again and wash the chip and seal we just did on Eighth Street. So can we dig that up and see if there's a leak there?
Is there a water line there?
Oh, I know what you're, I know what you're talking about now.
The filtering?
Yeah, I could hear you guys talking over there, but I didn't know what that was talking about, so...
I think it's quit running.
I thought it dried up.
It is now.
Well, anyway, I'm gonna be really upset that if I see water running down there and it destroys our new street that we just put in this year. So if you see water there, I mean, I, do you under, agree that the water, the dirt itself could filter this salt out?
As it comes up.
That, yeah, do you agree with that? Okay, well, I never even thought about that, so...
We have to see if there's a water line there.
Okay. That was my only water and wastewater, you guys got anything? Parks and Rec, mine was just to have a meeting with Kathy. Cemetery and Airport, Dan Morley and William Brennan came to St. Gregory's with me, to the third grade classroom, because they made, wrote letters in there to say what, how they could improve Dargitz Park. And so, so they wrote letters to the mayor, so I brought Dan and William with me to answer their questions and tell them about what they do for the city of Marysville. The kids loved them, they did a great job and, but they, they do think we need to have a fence around the littler kids playground to keep them isolated from the bigger kids.
Oh, to the, inside of the playground, not to the street?
Yeah, in the playground. They think they should be a separate fence around the little kids playground so that, number one, the little kids are kept in a safer area and also the big kids don't run into the little kids. Thoughts? These are my third graders are thinking.
Third graders. I don't have any thoughts on it.
I walk past her all the time, I don't look there.
What?
I walk past her all the time.
Okay, everybody go look at it.
I'm concerned on the west side because when there's, you know, T-ball or softball practice there, that, that playground's encroached quite a bit into the outfield, so you're gonna end up...
But then we really need to protect those little kids in there.
Oh, no, this is, trust me, they're not hitting grain slams on that park. It's not the one practices I go to. I, it's just, I don't know where you'd put the line that it would end up interfering with that diamond, the west diamond.
Okay, well, you go look at it, I think it, you know, it's kinda cool that they were concerned about the little kids being ran over by the big kids.
And the babysitters in that area, utilize that, cause there's usually a plethora of little ones there.
And I, when I, when I take my grandkids to a playground, I love, mine are little, less than three, and I love the fact when they're enclosed rather than open and we don't have an enclosed area there. So you guys can all look at it. Okay, police and fire, I just say congratulations to Sergeant Oldy. I mean, it's a great opportunity for him with the, and we'll miss him, but he gets to work eight to five, so...
I'd like to speak about that.
Oh, okay.
I do congratulate Dave Linga on getting the new job. His passion is teaching. Unfortunately, he taught a lot of stuff around here, including our free women's class, which I have no instructors now for. And we need to address the salaries. We lost him because we have done nothing since our last meeting. We had him meet him right over here to talk about salaries. The mayor asked for some information, I sent it to the entire council. So when this opportunity came, he went for it. He is our second largest asset that we had in the police department. You literally spent thousands and thousands of dollars training him. You literally spent thousands and thousands of dollars training him. Why wouldn't they grab him at the training center?
But he's going to work eight to five, right?
That has nothing to do with it, Mayor. What I'm talking about, he wouldn't have been looking. He went looking because the way he was treated here about the letter we showed you guys. We got rid of our own people. Fifty percent of my department in seven months. The problem with this is the salaries. How long we've been talking about, the sheriff's department is making $2.34 an hour more starting. Not just yesterday, it's been a long time. Now we're losing people even more. Starting the 15th of November, I get to play police officer and I have to work a schedule. So now the schedules are 90 hours. They work seven on, seven off. So that'll be my schedule, seven on, seven off. Do I have to come back in the other seven days to play chief? I have nobody to put on the street now. It's time to address this. We're way past. We have caused this ourselves because we have not addressed it.
Well, we talk about, I mean, we'll talk about salaries, but it will be for 2020.
So let's let everybody leave now like what's happening the last seven months. I have one other person right now that her husband has decided to apply to another state because of this very reason. Then I get to be the only day person from here on out. Right now we have four people that can work by themselves. Two nighttime people, two daytime people. I'm one of them now after the 15th of November. I don't get paid holidays. I don't get paid overtime. But I'm already on the schedule to work over Thanksgiving because I had to assume David's schedule. So what happens there?
Well, when I was a manager.
This is public entity. This isn't a private bank.
I did that and I filled in and I got way behind on my work, but, yeah, I know.
I don't think you understand, Mrs. Boss, how long it's going to take to train people. We have two people we've hired that don't even go to the academy till after their first of the year. Then they're gone 14 weeks. We can't even put them on the, on the street until probably May. Fill in? This isn't just fill in. This is the worst public safety issue we've had and we created it ourselves. I have to say, I'm not taking credit for that. I've been fighting for this wage for a long time to be done. But now we have a huge problem. Where's no more training until we get, until we get these, because I can't afford to have somebody gone to training because I have nobody put in the spot to work. Vacations are all been canceled through Christmas, through Thanksgiving because there is nobody to work. And what happens if somebody gets sick? Exactly. I, I'm salaried. I know who's going to fill those slots, but I will not do that forever, I promise you that. No. Because this is not created by law enforcement. It's created because of big corporations. We need to decide what the heck we're going to do to keep our people.
Well, you know, I gave you a couple ideas on how we could raise them significantly.
The only, biggest thing, it was my idea to wipe out the truck for next year to help pay for it. The other thing you gave me was me to cut out their overtime, built-in overtime. So basically you're cutting their salary and giving them salary back, which means absolutely nothing.
Well, but they don't have to work it.
What do you mean they don't have to work it?
If they get a salary.
Their wages right now are based off their schedules that they've had since way before I was even chief, over 20 years. 90 hours, that's what their wages are on. So now you want to cut their overtime, it's mandatory, there's four whole hours, and give them money back. Makes no sense. You're not doing anything for them.
Well, if they, but they don't have to work it, that's a.
What do you mean they don't have to work it? It's built into their schedule. This is the way that we are the only 24-hour agency in Marysville.
Well, maybe we need to evaluate that, Chief, really. Maybe that is our, what we need to do is to say we need to focus strictly on Marysville, not be deputized in the county.
The county has nothing to do with it. The mayor gave you those numbers. It cost the city of Marysville a whole $127. You asked for two months' worth of invoice. What did I give you guys? I gave you five months' worth.
But you didn't tell us like drive time and case management time and things like that?
I gave you time out of city. I went from when they were ten acres to they were back in the city on there. $127 is what it cost the city of Marysville for five months.
But, but if you look at, you know, I think with all our officers being deputized, we put ourselves so where we have to spread ourselves more and if we.
The only thing that deputization is for is if I have a case that started in Marysville, that I can go out and finish working my case, interview people in the county. That is all it's for. If I get a phone call that says that I have an accident or I have an officer that's going to search a house by himself, which we do not do, several miles outside of town, we're going anyway. We have to. Because about the time that you deny a service, we're getting sued. That is nothing compared to what a lawsuit for failure to do our job would be.
But you know, that information you gave us, you know, we did look at it and it showed that the, so there's 10,000 people in Marshall County and there's only 10 officers at the county level. So there's one officer per thousand people.
Are they understaffed? Yeah.
But, and then you look at Marysville and on Marysville's it had, you have one for every 400 people.
I'm not asking to add staff at all.
But, but the whole concept is that if you look at that and you say that we have more officers, we have, we have.
We have more officers per capita than the county does, yes.
We have, well, much more than the county, 1,000 versus 400.
Sure.
And compared to these other cities that you listed, we have more officers per people. And I told you at that meeting that if you actually went down one officer, you could increase your starting, starting wage rate to 18.
You're cutting service to the town. This is the same-sized department we have had over 30, 40 years. I've not increased anybody since I started as chief. Though we have created four square miles, when I first started, we were one square mile. And that whole, the national average, how many officers per capita, it'll tell you right on the disclaimer, all depends on your jurisdiction. We have to cover four square miles. That would be different if we were in Chicago and had four square miles. So four square, so the officers compared to miles or populations is a little different.
But, so, but going back to that conversation, I said if you have one less officer, then your starting rate, you could bump up to $18.
You want to cut my agency to help pay people more, so you're cutting a service to the town to pay people more.
Again, I don't, again, for us being the only 24-hour agency in the county, if we aren't that, we have less hours they have to work.
If we aren't 24-hour?
If we're not the only 24, if we're not the only 24-hour agency in the county, the county will have to hire more officers, the city can hire less and we can pay our officers more.
So you want the county to cover Marysville for a period of time?
Well, first off, our.
I get you losing me here.
Marysville already pays Marshall County taxes as well as Marysville County. So all of our people, our taxpayers are already paying Marshall County taxes.
Yes.
So if you have Marysville officers only cover Marysville and not be the only 24-hour agency, our officers can work less, we can have, we can work less, we can pay more, we can be like the county.
I don't want to be like Marshall County. I want to cover our town 24 hours. You talk about the tax base, yes, we pay a lot of tax. I live in North Park, so I'm more aware of how much taxes are. But because of the taxes are so high, I expect 24-hour police, fire, EMS, sewer and water. Am I wrong? I mean, you're all taxpayers too.
Well, it's just like when you look at all these other people, like Beloit, they have seven officers, Elkhurst has six, A&amp;O, Lindsburg has seven, Lyons has seven. All of this on the schedule that you showed me, we have a high, high, high number of officers based on our, our per capita.
One officer isn't a high number. If you look at how many times we have people gone either sick, vacation, training, rarely are we fully staffed all the time. But there are towns that are on call at night. I don't believe in that.
And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I would assume that the nature of a community will dictate somewhat what the requirements as far as per capita coverage, et cetera. Even by population, towns vary substantially in the needs and problems that you would have to deal with.
For the two highways.
Have one statue start in the middle of the night at Kestrel Block and see if it was, we should have somebody out.
We have Highway 77 and Highway 36.
Two major highways that cross the entire night.
And we have some employers and others that we have a transient population that tends to create demands.
Wherever that comes through, that everyone rides on.
Yeah, Beloit, Lindsburg, these towns have different needs based on my experience in.
Well, these are the cities he gave us.
I know, I'm just.
We just, I just picked.
I'm taking the cities that he gave me.
I picked.
Compared the per capita and how many employees they have, and, you know, we were one of the highest numbers of officers, so.
What do you know about the drug problem here?
We carry 90% of the schedule at the.
You know, the care of our children here? You know, there's, there's a lot that goes on here. There's a lot that goes on. You know, and I was surprised moving out of Omaha when I moved down here, but again, it has to do with, we're on two major highways going through here and there's a lot of people come here and they stop for a little bit and they check it out to see if they're going to be able to work the system, do some sort of criminal activity or not.
I had a meeting at the Capitol today and I was sent to the Secretary of Corrections. They had the same problem trying to be able to hire people. Their wage was 15.75 start, pretty close to ours, 15.8. They had to bump theirs to 18.26 just to find big jobs. So we're not at the state level, it's local, county, everybody's having trouble. Across the United States, in 10 years, we are 21,000 officers down. 21,000 is because we can't find people to fill them. Who wants to really be a police officer? I got to be honest with you, I told both of my sons, absolutely not. No.
Well, I, you know, I know that in May I said, why don't you push your vehicles for one more year and then you could.
I actually brought that up myself.
No, I brought that up.
I brought that up because I told Austin first, then he brought it up in the meeting. Because Austin told me, he said, hey, what do you think about the vehicles? We keep great care of our vehicles. Push one year? I don't care.
So why didn't you jump on that?
Why didn't you jump on it? We've been talking about it since then.
I know, but I brought it up at the, at the April budget meeting and it was never said, I want to do this. It was never brought back to council to do anything with it.
With what? Salaries? Or the trucks?
To make that change.
Our trucks aren't even up for bid until January, February. We were talking about it then. Austin and I have talked many times about pushing a truck back for a year. I don't know what you're getting, it's never been brought up. We've talked about it before.
Well, you've never been, brought us a proposal to say, you know, these, I'd like to do this, this is how we're going to fund it. I mean, there's two, there's two areas here. Do we give you a raise and how do we fund it? Giving you a raise is an easy answer. Yes, you guys, we need to pay our officers more. That's what I said. Yes, we need to pay our officers more. This part is where I'm trying to give you options. I'm trying to give you options.
The only option you have given us is the option we had of pushing a truck. Guaranteed, we can push a truck for a year. I am not willing to shrink the department, I guess that's still up to you guys if you want to shrink our department, to pay for higher salaries. That makes no sense to me at all. Those to me are not viable, viable options. The truck is, but it's not cutting staff. That is the last resort. Our problem is, I'm missing two administration staff now. I can't just go hire somebody with the wage you're paying and walk in.
What now?
I had a gentleman this weekend write that's an assistant chief in another area. Turned me down the night he got home.
Too much.
I mean, is it? No. This, this definitely needs to be fixed.
Well, you know, the things we did discuss at that meeting was, you know, the concept of that you could reduce your officer one time, your one count and increase your starting salary to 18,000, I'm sorry, $18 an hour. And we also talked about combining Marshall County and Marysville.
But that's not, you have nothing right to do that except for one vote. That takes, like I've said many times, it takes a vote of every city, takes a vote of the county, and takes a vote of the legislature. Last time somebody did it in only one place in the whole state, took four and a half years to do it.
But, but we haven't, but you haven't made any steps to do that, right?
To combine them?
Yeah, or.
No. Well, to combine agencies isn't my step. Because in reality, if I push to combine all these, I might have a job and they say hire me as a director. Have I talked about running for sheriff and taking over both departments? Yeah. I can't do that without your permission.
Well, what you're requesting is that we immediately raise the salary, not 2020.
Yes, because I can't hire. I refuse to.
I do not understand that.
I refuse to lower our standard of officers hiring. If we were in a public session, I could tell you some of the stuff I've seen coming across our desk, and it was absolutely no way. And I'm not feeling, other departments are the same way inside the city. And it's not, again, it's not just our agency that it's.
But you were saying the whole entire state is having a hard time.
Entire country is.
Entire country, wow. Yeah.
Huge topic today, everything we go, $21,000 for 21,000 officers now, it's almost three quarters of like LAPD, $26,000.
Employment's at a 50-year low?
Yes.
I mean, that's the bad thing about low employment, there's plenty of places to work.
That's just it. And that just says people don't want to do this. It's a national climate.
Well, and one other thing, Chief, you know, that, when, we just had that meeting in September. It's not like we've.
It's September because I waited a few weeks before I sent you the stuff on September 29th.
So, I mean, it's not like we're dragging our feet, I mean, you.
It's a month.
You just.
I don't think, well, I guess where I come from, I don't feel that you see the necessity that I do, that we need to step on this. We're losing people. 50% of our departments, seven months.
So, so we had that meeting and, and we talked about it, but to be honest, you nor Austin brought anything to the council to say this is our proposal?
I was told to bring these numbers back and I sent them to, not just to you, but I gave them to the entire council. What more would you rather me have done? I got in trouble for handing information to the media. So from then on, I ain't handing anything out until you ask for it.
What were the marching orders the police and fire committee had after the meeting?
It went like this right now, it was an hour of nothing, basically.
You know what happened is.
Nothing got decided, nothing got done. And days.
Well, I think.
Well, we've already made the budget for 2019. It's like, where would, you know?
Well, are you getting a new truck in 20? I can't remember.
In 2020? We're supposed to, but I don't mind pushing it.
Could we do that and take that money for 2020? Move the truck?
Yeah, well, I'm just waiting for you guys. I'm, to be honest.
I'm just throwing it out there.
That's a short term, I mean, that gets us one year.
You, Chief, and you, Austin, need to bring something to the council to propose.
What I would like to be able to do, I know, I know some people I'm trying to bring in. But I need to have a wage to be able to offer them. Austin needs to be able to have the authority to say, yes, this wage would work if we bring them in, these people. I'm talking pre-certified people already.
So, then the city doesn't have to pay to certify them?
And we don't have to wait.
Legitimately, from time to time.
We can't hire them who haven't been certified at this point.
15, 20 grand. You know, it's, our contracts are only 10 grand because we, by law, we can't charge them for everything that we do for them.
Well, that's part of hiring someone you've trained a little to.
It is. Well, yeah, except ours is 14 weeks long, plus road time.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's just, it's very expensive for police officers because it's not only, once you're done with it, you have 40 hours mandatory after that every year per person. It gets expensive. Like, I hated losing day. I was hoping someday he'd just take my place when I retired.
I understand it also is not a long-term solution, but are there departments that offer incentives, bonus, sign-on bonuses, things like that?
Well, I saw new, Tepica's offering a $5,000 signing bonus. Some offer mobility. Some offer education. You know, there was one time I tried to take all of our diversion money and I asked the council to have to create an education fund, not just for the police department, for every city employee. I got called arrogant and self-serving. I already had both of my degrees. I didn't need it. But it died right there. I was, I was supposed to be paid for my education. I got two degrees, I paid for them myself. I talked to the mayor about it one day. I was told I should have gotten writing. Well, yes, I should have. The days of handshakes is out. Contracts for everything now. And just, we have tried and everything. Some agencies have nighttime differential. You get an extra dollar or two an hour if you work overnights. You know, you get steps for education bonuses if you get certain degrees. We don't have any of that. It's been tried. So, the incentives for trying to hire people is very low when I try to find people to hire. I don't like, we have to hire people without any experience. We got two of them sitting in a case right now. They'll be great officers when we're done with them. But they won't be any real use to us till probably marriage. We got a lot of months ahead of us here. I have to decide how I'm going to work a shift as a police officer and remain, and still do chief. Because I ain't working every day for the next six months. That ain't gonna happen. So, we need to decide what we're going to do. I guess besides the raises, besides what we're hiring, what are you going to do with me? If I start working holidays, if I start working overtime, does this wife decide because I'm chief of police and I'm salaried? That I need to know ahead of time.
How does, what does everybody else?
Joe, I wanted to ask a question. I noticed looking at David Oldie's resignation, we just saw it. When did you first see it?
The day I sent it to him.
When did you know about it?
The day that he wrote it and the same day I sent it to the council, or to the, over here.
Because I noticed the letters, his resignation isn't dated, so I was just.
No, that's, I served it the same day because he called me, told me I have something for you.
It would have been nice if you had known that as a head of the police department, to be able to either come to us then or see if you could do some negotiating right away to see if he wasn't going to.
There has been no council meeting since then. I can say that. Because I sent it over here to Austin as soon as the day I got it. Because I wasn't happy when I got it either. I trained him eventually to take my spot.
It was last, last week.
Yeah, it's a shame that happened, that he didn't give us some warning. But that's, that's how people look for other jobs. That's why people move around.
Well, I had a, I had a pretty good suspicion because when I, when the training center called me about it and I knew they were looking for two instructors. So, I had a pretty good idea and I knew how, I had him trained. And, yeah, he's, pick him up like that, sure he will.
Well, it's a great opportunity for him. If he gets to work eight to five, it's a promotion. He'd have to wait for you to.
It's not a promotion. He is now out of police service. He is trained to be chief. He is trained to be a sheriff. He is trained to lead an agency. But he chose, his love is instructing, he likes doing it. Unfortunately, we're losing a family out of Marysville for it. No, he was trained to be an agency head.
But to get that position, you're not ready to retire, so.
That position is for retirees. If you look at all their resumes on their website, they're all retirees. So, what it's for? You take your experience and your training and your education and you go teach everybody what you learned. So, what happened? So, again, what do I need to do?
Well, like I said, like I said at the candidate forum, is you and Austin need to bring something to the council on what you want to do, what raises you want, what, and how you're going to fund it and bring it to the council.
I, I, I don't know. Because if I bring funding, you're going to sit and tell me, no, they need to do this. You know your numbers, you know the city budget probably better than I do. That's what, that's what we're told. You tell me how we can fund $2.34 an hour per officer from here on out. I pity Austin having to look at the budget, figure it out. Because, I mean, he's pulling his hair out too.
I set the budget up for this. And I got scolded for it. So, we have 51, we have the ability to raise right now, moving the truck, either $2.20 or $2.40, depending on how you look at it. The la, that's, that's it. I've been working on this, trying to, trying to get it done before something like this happened.
Yes, we've been talking about it since last year, last spring.
I, yeah.
Unfortunately, we've lost some really good people.
Yes, we have.
We truly have. And it kills me as an administrator, we were truly looked at in Marysville. People really liked our department, they like our town, they like our department, they love our fire department. You guys treat us really well with equipment, with training, with everything we have. And then they look at our salary. When somebody can walk in as a dispatcher or to a simple jailer position and start out more an hour, that's pretty insulting to me. It's insulting to, to tell somebody this is what you're going to start at. It truly is. And I look at it as a reflection upon me. I'm failing the people that work under me. Huge now, 50% of my agency, gone.
I don't remember you at the, when we were doing the 2019 budget, you talking about, we need to increase the salaries now, we need to do it now. When we did salary increases, we.
Every, every department head has always talked about, we need more money because we can't retain the people we have or it's too hard to find people for them out what we're paying.
But when we did the budget, I mean, it was, what?
I was asked.
Excuse me?
Here's the thing. During the budget, I was asked, why did I increase the salary, salary lines for the police so much?
Which, well, that was in 2020.
That was this year.
Yes.
2020. Yeah, this year. So, I, that's, that's why. And I got looked down upon for doing such a thing. And no, I was, I was scolded for it. I was questioned at length why I did that. So, you ask why we didn't, I prepared for this. It's right here. Simple. $2.26, $2.40, right here.
Why didn't you bring it up? It was a long time ago.
Because, oh, I got questioned. I brought it to you, to everybody and God scolded.
I have never heard this. It's $232 per hour.
No, not this. I had to figure this out. But I increased the salaries for this. I, I increased salary lines and got tacked down to. Why did you do this? Why did you need to raise it that much?
Did we leave it?
You left it.
We left it.
But it didn't erase what I was, what, what you guys did to me.
We left the number.
It's because not everybody agreed with you. Not everybody agreed with the council members that didn't like it. We left it, yes. But it's been here. I set that number up.
Austin, I do not remember this conversation at all.
We've never had this discussion at a budget workshop.
You questioned me about, okay, anybody, okay, if you're not going to back me on this, this is.
I, I remember it. I may have, I don't know. I was at every workshop, so.
And woe is me, I don't want to wade into the Monday morning quarterbacking at all. The way I see it, there's two problems. Retention.
What was the salary? And did they try to retain?
Retention and recruitment.
Yes.
But retention's first because now that what we have, staff we have left are going to be under additional pressure. Staff, including you.
Correct.
So, to my eye, put out the retention fire as best you can while working on the recruitment fire. Because the recruitment's going to help your retention eventually. But retain, but we can't afford to lose other staff right now.
No, we're going to have a ref six months. There's no doubt.
But if you lost somebody else, it'd be that much rougher.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, do we already give anything for holiday pay? Is there any?
Oh, yeah, they get.
Well, police officers get a holiday pay because they're the only people that are required to work during a holiday.
I think, is it double?
Double time and a half.
Double time and a half.
Double time and a half.
But if they have vacations that now had to be reeled back, that's going to.
I had to cancel all vacations.
Yeah, that's going to cause a lot of heartache for people and families.
I am now scheduled, because I take David's schedule, I get to work holidays now.
Right.
Plus a whole bunch of overtime now. Am I expected to be there the seven days off? As chief?
I don't.
If I am, I am. I prefer to be compensated for it if I'm going to be there more than 90 hours for two weeks. Now, how long do we have to our next councilman? When is the next councilman?
12.
12. They have to Veterans Day.
Okay. I don't mind working with Austin on, on, for starting wage by then. Now, if something comes up where I have a person, I've already got somebody offering, if not corporal, but an assistant chief's position. I need to find out what it is we're going to be able to offer pay-wise.
Well, if they've got experience, we're going to, we can offer more than, I mean, definitely more than starting.
Yes. But we, Austin's not been given that authority to be able to do that. I guess what I'm looking for is, we, you've already created the salary ranges. I mean, it's in our salary, what we call.
Ranges. Yeah, we have ranges, exactly that, according to your.
What I would like to be able to do is with Austin, if it's within that range, Austin can say, we're hiring this person out there that's within the governing body's range they've set.
Well, why wouldn't that be anyway?
Yeah, isn't that always in a thing?
You guys set the wages. Austin hires everybody, but the wages have to be voted on here?
Well, we changed that.
We, we did update that. It, we just, okay, so what, so what, okay, so what, basically reassurance that we can go and hire somebody with experience and adequate, and in their pay range for, just to get them in.
We already agreed to that.
Okay.
That we don't approve the salaries. He tells us what he hired at what rate.
And at what.
As well as long as it's within the range for that position.
I got no problem at all with that.
Okay. And we will, we'll come back with, we'll come back with the presentation of all that stuff.
Yeah, the $2.40 an hour, that puts us just six cents higher than Marshall County. That's all it does.
Well, a year ago, we had the same issue in, in the city hall. We lost half and we had to make up for every single thing and it's very difficult to hire because the county just hired a person last week at $2 an hour more than I pay my counter for.
To sit in the office.
To sit in the office, yeah. And she takes all the water black.
Right. So, we'll come back and we'll recruit. If we got people in the wings, yes.
We'll talk tomorrow then.
Okay.
But now, me, what we're going to do with me? I would like to notify my family ahead of time if I'm going to have a Christmas party.
Well, you know, in general, I'm just saying, salaried people work more than just 40 hours a week. That's just.
I guarantee you I work more than 40 hours a week.
But I'm just saying.
I know.
That's what, why you have salaried people.
And I'm assuming a 90-hour schedule, which is 45 hours a week, which is, I don't hurt up for a salary person. I have no problem with that. What about the seven days I'm off? Because an officer's schedule is seven on, seven off.
That, I think that policy that was set was up to me. The one where overtime, no, not, where it governs salaried, it goes to your supervisor.
To, to, like if I would be paid overtime or?
No, not paid overtime, but if, if you worked so much, and you can go back and read, if you worked so much.
It does. You can tell he doesn't have to work the seven. He can do that in our policy.
I think that, that was that policy that was set.
It was.
No, I, I know, I know he had to come in and work. What I want to know is, am I working for free those extra seven days?
You don't have to come in and work them, is what he's saying.
I know. How many people want their chief of police not working a week at a time?
I don't know.
We have part-time, we have part-time officers that can come in and help us?
Part-time guys work Friday nights because they have full-time jobs during the week.
How about?
That's another thing we need to talk about too. We're looking at salaries the other day I got them. Our part-time guys are way off from each other. When in reality, they should be higher than they are because we don't pay bennies to them whatsoever. You know, and it's like Marshall County, I'm just going out there because they're the local agency. They actually pay theirs higher as well because there's no, no benefit package at all. That's just something that Austin and I can talk about as we'll bring back to you. But anyway.
And is there any other retired officer? Now, we can't, we can't have our, our retired officers as part-time officers, right? Like, we can't hire Larry Wenzel.
You don't have retired officers here.
Huh?
You don't have retired officers here.
But like Larry Wenzel, we can't, we can't.
Oh, he can come back and work part-time.
We can hire him as a part-time person?
If he wants to, if it fits into his new job over there.
Yeah. So, have you looked?
He just retired from here. He took a full-time job when he left.
Yeah. So, have you thought, have you looked around for if there are any other retired officers?
I have known our officers around here for years and we have no retirees around here. Larry is our only officer that has actually retired in the 20 years I've been chief. They usually move on to larger agencies.
Can we convince our part-time officers to become full-time officers?
No, with your plan. I can tell you one of them makes more than I do. And the other one, close. And the thing is about, it's almost easier to find full-time people at the right wage than it is part-time. Because part-time, you have to ask them to take two weeks of vacation from their original job to go to the part-time academy, which is mandated by law, to become certified. They're harder to find. I mean, how many of you would give up two weeks of your personal vacation to go sit at KALI TC for two weeks? How many people do that? It's hard.
How about that? You didn't want to hire the husband and wife? Have you reconsidered that?
No.
Okay.
Mainly the reason, scheduling's a nightmare. When I became chief, I had a husband and wife team and they're no longer here. Matter of fact, I can't even tell you about it because it was sealed. So, we have to deal with my seven days off. I mean, we'll have another councilman before then if you want to think about it. I would just, I'd like to ask when I come back. Next councilman.
Because that's what an officer's schedule is, correct?
What's that?
An officer's schedule is seven days on, seven days off.
They work a full day Thursday through and then they have a half a day the next Thursday to make sure they get their hours, then they're off until the following Thursday.
Well, I still would like you to evaluate, you know, the 24-hour agency and see if there's.
I really don't want to tell, or even tell the city of Marysville that people were thinking about going to a non-24-hour agency. thinking about going to the mom 24-hour agency. As a taxpayer, I find that unacceptable with what we pay in taxes.
Well, so Marshall, but Marshall County, all their residents somehow don't have 24-hour agency and nobody's yelling at them.
And you ain't listening.
I would be yelling.
Our, we hold 90% of the case load at the county attorney's office.
But see, I, I have a problem with that though.
We're a proactive agency.
I have a problem that we are carrying 90% of the load at the Marshall County level.
Why do too?
Because that means that the county is taking advantage of the Marysville-
No, 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 no. Our, our cases don't originate in the county. These are Marysville cases.
Oh, they're all Marysville cases.
Rarely, if there is, if we have a case that originates in the county, they may ask our assistants on an investigation or a download of a cellphone or something. But I can't even remember the last time that I went out in the county and started my own investigation. It's, it's bad PR. We let, we let them do. If they want help, we assist them. No, they're their cases. All of our cases there, those are, those are ours. We are very proactive agency. We have been. I'm worried about not having enough people right now to keep up with stuff that's going on. I truly am. It's a public safety issue and it worries me because I'm the person in charge of it. Austin and I will meet tomorrow, we'll chat about some stuff and then I'll have it in your packet for what we want for the Lexman State.
You'll have a proposal for us?
If you figure out how to fund it, I'll bring you what I want.
Well, that's your job.
We'll get it.
All right. Admin and finance?
Well, this isn't really administrative and finance, but I'm liaison to the K-State students that are working on the Depot project and the downtown design. And we had two Zoom conferences last week. The first one was, the students did a little short presentation and I think there were, let's see, there were five, five on the 23rd and pertaining to the Depot. And they all, all five of them used the Everji lots. So anyway, I emailed a professor and said, those actually both belong to Everji. They don't belong to us. Then on the next day, it was the design committee and one of the, they had, some of them had some really interesting titles to their group, like, you know, there's destination, Marysville, navigation and identity, Broadway or bust, momentum, momentum for Marysville. One of them had some ideas on signs and like using round signs for like museums and destinations. And one of the groups picked the northwest part of Marysville, which I thought was good because they said that's kind of a neglected area. But they will be back November the 6th to show the public their designs. And so they, they want whatever room we use, whether it's here or the art center, we're going to use here. Okay. So they're going to have like the Depot area, say maybe up here and the downtown design at the back. And they will set up their sketches and talk about their proposals. So it'd be good if everybody could come. And I guess we're just going to kind of do host the mixer. Is that right?
Bob and I talked about it today and he said that our mixer should start at 5:30, which is non-typical of when they usually start because the presentations will start at 6 o'clock. And I think the food will be in the hallway and he wants to divide them so they're back to back. So one half the room is UP and one half the room is downtown. So that there's a division for them. And that was the way Bob looked at it.
So they, would they, will they actually have a presentation?
No.
No, you walk.
No.
You just, so you, it's just, you walk and see it. So it's really critical that we have all the people, you know, the stakeholders we didn't have participate in the planning. But it's critical that we have businesses and bankers and all the people come and see these.
Because I don't think any of them were included initially. And, and you're talking about widening their sidewalk or putting, one of the groups suggested putting a bike lane in the middle of Broadway. Oh, one group thought it would be good to have a roundabout at the intersection of-
10th and Center.
Yes, 10th and Center.
So some of these ideas, you know, these are, these are 18 to 22-year-olds. But the key thing is that I would like the businesses to be here to, one, tell us what can't, what they do like about all of them, what are doable and how we can incorporate different ones to make it work. But we really need to have business owners and we need bankers and we need residents and we need a lot of people to come. So are you going to have, make sure Main Street and Chamber is invited?
Yes, because the-
They're sending out the invitations.
Bob's sending out the invitations, Main Street's sending out the invitations. Yes.
For positive.
For, yes.
Because I really thought we should have had a greater mix on the front end. And now it's too late to worry about that because I really think we should have had some businesses. You know, Chromie Lumber or Napa Auto or those people should have been included in anything having to do with the Depot. People, somebody on Main Street, a business on Main Street should have been involved with the urban design. But at least they can come and look at the designs and go with it from there. So hopefully everybody will come. November 6th, Wednesday night, 5:30. Be here before 5:30.
5:30 and then the students start at 6:00.
Yeah. But come at 5:30 because the mixer starts at 5:30.
I think at 5:00 to start setting up.
He's setting, oh, yeah, the students, but the people should come in at 5:30.
Okay. Anything else, Darlene?
I don't know.
Anything else you were said at the meeting too?
Marysville Main Street, Chamber and Michelle, they will all send out the invitations for this.
Okay. I, I listened to it. I was driving on the way home in Austin, Wathena, but I was listening to it the whole time. So, so I didn't give any feedback.
Lot of interesting ideas. You could tell that they weren't familiar with a small community, a lot of them, you know, but their ideas, some of them were pretty cool.
Yeah, I couldn't see what they were proposing because I was driving.
Right. I mean, some of it's not logical, obviously, but then they're looking at a big thing. So that was what they were supposed to do, outside the box. And, and some of them are very cool.
I didn't like, one thing I'll say, I did like when they said, there should be a water feature to tie the Blue River rail trail to the Blue River.
And that was kind of-
And I thought that made so much sense. I was like, that's a simple concept that there should be a water feature.
Every one of them, the biggest issue in this whole place, every one of them, no signage. No signage, no signage, no signage, no signs.
Or it's just a mishmash.
Right, that something that's consistent.
Nothing, and I've been saying this for a long time, to point to where the historic downtown is.
Yeah. Well, that, one of them had, some of them had a couple of good ideas. They are twice. But anyway, we don't need to talk about it. Everybody come. Are we done with admin and finance?
I got one finance thing. We did get the radio grant for the police, also. We got a $30,000, 100% grant for new car radios to go along with our other 800 band radios. So that's good.
Have we already spent that?
Oh, we, we sent them in, we sent in what we, yeah, we, we haven't paid for the car radios yet. But we had set out what we were going to get.
Okay. All right.
I did have mayor. I forgot something on the cemetery. Dale has been wanting, maybe we need a new kiosk or something out to the cemetery.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah. And I didn't know if we, if Dale could maybe start, maybe kind of planning something or maybe something they could work on this winter, if it'd be okay with the council or see how much it would cost to put something together. They really need to put something new out there.
I agree. You guys are okay with him coming up with some ideas? Okay. Anything else?
No.
All right. My roundtable was already discussed. So Darlene, you got anything?
No. Well, yes, I guess about the civics group at the high school and junior high that Ben involved in and Carla and Diane also helped with the first one. The November is going to be volunteerism. And I was wondering if the city, I've talked to Dave Richardson about, he and some of the firefighters talking about volunteer firefighters. But I wondered if in conjunction with like this city cleanup week, if we might suggest students helping, helping like retired people or handicapped or if there's, and I don't know about coordinating it or think that's a possibility? And there's, there's like the seventh or eighth graders that could probably do things like that, you know?
I think it's a good idea. I mean, they could pull the stuff to the curb for these property owners and stuff like that. Get it ready. They're not going to go with our city crews. They're going to just get the stuff ready for the cleanup.
Not do any heavy duty or, no.
Okay. You guys okay with that, making that volunteer opportunity within the city?
We're going to have a meeting the 31st to kind of lay out the plans of how that day will work. It's, it's November the 12th is the next civics day.
Is it the 12th? Isn't it the 14th? Anyway. The 12th is our council meeting now. Is it the 12th?
I don't know. I think it's on Wednesday.
Anyway, it's forthcoming.
Somewhere in there, huh?
It's forthcoming. Anything else?
No.
Bobby?
No.
Gina?
No.
Terry?
I'm Austin. I'm 58.
I think it was a good black squirrel night. Wasn't too wet or too cold.
It was beautiful. Perfect weather.
That's what you can get.
That's it?
That's it.
Diane?
I put a thing here in our packet or here on the desk about the workshop that we went to or the, and I had on here about the federal advocacy update. And I just wanted you to look at the addition that I had here from Brian Egan. And it was about the, some financing that maybe we could get through our bank about the, maybe our firehouse. I will hope maybe some of you will look at it. I had the email that I attached. I think I talked to Carla about it, so.
Yeah, you talked, you said you were waiting for that information from them. This wasn't with Raymond James though, right? Who was it with?
No, no. It was, he works for the NLC.
National League of Cities.
Yeah, National League of Cities. And he emailed me some information and you might look at it. So maybe we can finance it through maybe our local bank or something. So.
That would be good.
Yes.
Okay, I'll look at it.
Yeah. But it's in there. So hopefully maybe some of you will look at it. So, but and it's just like workshops that I, I did. So, and thank you for letting us go. It was very interesting. So.
All right. Kev?
Yeah. I've been meaning to bring this up for a while, but now that it's gotten darker sooner, it really is bugging me. Is there, or maybe you don't know, lumens on lights at night? You know, when you drive by Hometown Lumber.
Oh, I hate that sign. It blinds me. It just blinds me. I'm sorry.
Landals Lane.
We don't have any restrictions.
Heritage Inn.
Can we?
Can we?
Especially when they flip and they change.
Yeah. I mean, if you're going down the road, it, I mean, it-
Are you talking, but you, you would have to be retroactive with it.
If they're, if they can adjust it, they put a filter screen on it.
They can change the colors of the background.
They need to be toned down for night because it-
Because some of those white ones, they blind me.
It takes, it takes your way for two or three seconds to readjust.
Hometown Lumber's one of the worst. Hometown Lumber's one of the worst.
I think we really need to work on ordinance addressing the-
Oh, yeah. The ordinance or resolution, something.
It's been a problem for a couple of years.
Yeah. I mean, because we're getting more and more.
And there will be more and more.
Because I noticed now when I go home from here and when I turn on Sixth Street, they just put one in the front of the cellular place down there.
Oh, really?
That really-
Inside the building?
Yeah. And it really lights street up real bad in front at night when it goes to the, the white. It just-
It's for safety. Safety. You see everything around.
Yeah.
That's because they broke in that, they broke in that window and I bet they added that for safety.
Yeah, it's just-
Remember they broke in that?
Yeah, I know. But, you know, the different lights that changes and, I mean, it's just-
Irritating.
It is.
Distracting and dangerous.
It is.
Okay, irritating, distracting and dangerous.
Yeah, all that. All the above, yes.
Okay. All right. Austin can work on that.
Yeah, look on it.
Yeah, we'll look into it. Anything else?
That's all I had. Thank you.
Jason? All right. I'm going to turn the motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?